Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is February 16th of 2021. I'd like to call the City of Cortland Common Council Meeting to Order. And start off with, if you could all rise, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe I've got everybody muted. And you do have the opportunity to unmute after the pledge. You say it along with me. I pledge allegiance
I pledge allegiance to the flag
United States of America.
America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Public comments, if anybody would like to speak during the public comment period. Council gives the opportunity for up to three minutes. Please address council directly with a topic that is relevant to city business. And we ask that people are respectful in terms of their comments to the council and others. So if there's anybody who would like the opportunity to speak during the public comment period. I see a hand up from James Knight. And then the other thing would be to give me your name in the chat box. But James Knight, would you like the opportunity to address council?
Yes, I would.
Very good. The floor is yours.
My name is James Knight. I am a homeowner, excuse me, homeowner and private business owner in Cortland. I was previously United States Army, seven years, served honorably, fought three campaigns in Iraq. Just a bit about me. Now, the reason why it's pertinent here is today I spent quite a bit of time on the phone with a few members of the council and also with the junior chancellor of SUNY Cortland. Oh, I'm sorry, of SUNY. The reason why I bring this up is my concerns are our police force last night responded to a situation with college. And there was 100 students at a house party in Cortland. And four of them are interim to be suspended. The other 96 of that 96, 12 have been identified. The reason why I bring this up is because I have pitched, I have already said it to the chancellor's office that I am pushing forward for the president of SUNY Cortland to be removed from his position due to negligence of his duties. I understand we are a college town. This is the college community. We thrive off of it because students give us business. On the other hand, my mother, my father, my grandfather, my children, their lives are priceless. We have students knowingly engaging in behavior that's not conducive to the well-being of our community. So we have 96 bodies floating through our community that were in a household of college students from different areas of the country. Contaminating our community and vice versa. If our communities are infected with COVID, then it goes to the campus and spreads national. Last semester, we had protocols in place for students not to do sit-down dining. It was supposed to be take-out orders only, not to go to bars, not to participate in group gatherings, larger than so on and so forth. Those policies are not in effect. Now, speaking to the chancellor's office, the junior chancellor I spoke with directly, they have taken actions and they have stated openly in the press against the president of SUNY Cortland and his lack of action and irresponsibility and lack of due diligence with his position. I have spoken to a few council members today as well, and I feel that they agree with me. And so does the vice chancellor that the president of SUNY Cortland is not doing enough to avoid future pandemic breakout. And the day he released a statement stating that there are all-time high-risk infection at the college, that very evening, there was a two-and-a-half-hour standoff with Cortland Police Department and 75 students locked in rooms that refused to come out. The police department got so many calls that they had to leave the scene and not identify those individuals. So we have 75 individuals that are out and running around our community, potentially infecting everybody. Now, if SUNY has released that they will be doing testing twice a week mandatory for all students because of the situation, they're not taking lightly. The chancellor has been more than accommodating with comments and his thoughts and views on it. I, as a member of this community, feel that the president of SUNY Cortland is not in the best interest of the people. And since we don't have say whether he has a job or not, I think that we should look to our own to imply ordinances that better control the influx of students in our community and how it affects us until we can get through this. Like I said, I'm a simple guy. I was a soldier. I pulled the trigger for a living. But I settled my roots here after my entire life drifting around. This is my home. This is where I am. I've seen many of you around town. I'm going to be here. My son, six months old, he was born in Syracuse, otherwise he'd been born here. This is my home and we need to preserve it because there's not going to be anything left if things continue the way they are. So I bring it before the council. People much smarter than myself, I get things done. That's what I do. I made a lot of calls, talked to a lot of people. And we all feel the same. We need to find action and we need to take it. So I lead this to the council and what direction we go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, for your comments and thank you for your service. Anybody else that would like to speak this evening? I'd like to recognize Frederick Pierce from SUNY Cortland.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to speak to Mr. Knight. Mr. Knight, first of all, thank you for your service and thank you for raising your family in SUNY Cortland, which is a community that we are part of and that we love. And you are absolutely right in what you say about those students and their behavior posing a threat to not only the people on campus and their fellow students and the future of our semester, but to those around them. I will say you are not correct in laying the blame at President Bitterbaum. I would say that we are doing the same things that all the other SUNY campuses are doing. We are disciplining. Last semester, we disciplined and suspended more students in one semester than we had the previous several years combined. We actually expelled two, suspended 120. We basically banned 127 from campus, although we let them study online. And we had nearly 200 on probation. We've never had anything like that before because we take the threat that these students, that that type of behavior poses. And I will say that the vast majority of our students are following the guidelines. And we're in sync with what the chancellor is saying. We're not at odds. And I don't believe what he has said publicly is that he is, that he is watching SUNY Cortland, which he should be. With the numbers that we have, and certainly after that incident Friday, there is great concern. And any ideas that people have? What, what students did Friday night in locking themselves behind doors so law enforcement officers couldn't get to them? Law enforcement officers don't have the ability to, to go beyond what they did. Neither does the president of SUNY Cortland. We can control to a great extent the students on campus. And if you go to campus, which you actually can't do because we're not allowing visitors on campus, that's part of the restrictions we put in place. But you'll see mask wearing. You will see social distancing. You will see that we've set things up to minimize the spread. And off-campus, most of our students behave. But then you get something like Friday, and you're right. You have students that we don't know who they are. We're doubling our testing. We're all, we're testing right now more than anybody else in SUNY Cortland than, excuse me, in the SUNY system. And the reason we do that is so as soon as we find out, we can move quickly to isolate people that are testing positive and quarantine the people that are, that are living with them. Is it going to be enough to stop the spread? I hope so, but we don't know. We fully anticipated there to be initially high numbers when we came because we are testing a lot more than we tested in the fall. And we had an early start. We were testing our full population quicker than other SUNNIs did. So initially, we had a higher count than most. But with an incident like Friday, and we would appreciate any help we can get in, in finding students and holding these students accountable. You know, we are very concerned and, and very worried. And we're going to be watching the numbers very closely and enforcing things as closely as we can. And I do offer anyone who has some, some thoughts about further steps we can take, please reach out to us and, and let us know. Again, this is, this is our community. We live here and we care about the people that live here. So we, we want to do the right things.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Is there anybody else present that would like privilege of the floor for this evening? Go to David Jones. David, can you unmute yourself?
Brian, I'm scheduled on the agenda. Does that make any difference? Or would you like me to go forward now? It's number eight on the agenda, I think.
We, I, I would recommend that we wait and can call upon you during the agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And one more time, is there anybody that would like the opportunity to address council this evening? Tom, you're on council. I'm not sure you can do this.
Okay, I'll wait.
Nope, Tom, go ahead. And then after you, I believe we'll go to Kat, assuming that we have nobody else from the public who would like to speak. So Tom Michaels, floor is yours.
Well, I was kind of waiting. You know, the, the number was brought up at the meeting we had the other day, but I wasn't quite sure exactly how many might have gotten suspended during that ordeal. I don't, I don't think forced suspensions are really going to send the message home. And that's basically what I want to put my point across.
All right, so from the, from the city's standpoint, we're aware, and this will be a good message, not just for the community, but the entire community. Regardless of why you're in Cortland, the expectations are the same. And we are holding everybody in the community to the same standard. And there are people that are concerned when they see neighbors or other people. And it could be just driving down the road. It could be walking a dog and you hear something. We talk about you hear something, say something. And we've spoken about that when we're talking about life or death issues. We are talking about potential life or death issues. The pandemic is real. We're approaching 500,000 Americans who have passed within, and this is going to happen within the next couple of weeks. It's a sobering statistic. And we're taking this seriously. If there are gatherings that are inappropriate, they will be found and everybody will be held accountable. And if anybody is listening who managed to get away on Friday, do it again and you will not get away. You can think of it as almost a game of cat and mouse. And the mouse can get away nine times out of 10. Gets caught that one time, the mouse does not win. And this is not a game. And we are taking this seriously. And future similar events will be treated very seriously. And as residents try to do things to skirt law enforcement or to try to get around how law enforcement is operating, there's other ways for us to get where we need to be. So if, if there are people that tried to do the same thing as what happened this past Friday and try to not comply with law enforcement, they're going to get a lot of attention. And it would be best for me to leave it at that at this point. I would like to pass the floor to Kat McCarthy.
Thank you. I wanted to kind of take a transition and say both thank you and kudos to the wastewater department. They recently reviewed some data on electrical usage. They've been able to compare their data from 2009 to 2018, the average over that 10-year period to the 2020 usage. And through the biogas to electricity generator, they've reduced the carbon footprint by 94.5%. So that's really significant and pretty amazing. That's the equivalent to carbon sequestration for 2,466 acres of forest, according to an EPA calculator. So, and that's just one year. So thank you so much for the work on that. And really, that's, it's a great thing for our community to help us move, move forward on reducing our emissions. So thank you.
Hey, Mayor.
Outstanding. Mr. Titler.
Brian, I, I, I just want to, I'm glad Kat brought that up because I was hoping maybe we could have Bruce come. I was going to bring up something similar. I was hoping maybe he could come to our next meeting and do a little presentation on the energy that you're saving over there and reducing your carbon and sort of go through that for the community. Because when I read that today, I was, I sent him an email too. I just think it's fantastic. So I'd like to invite Bruce to our next meeting for a little presentation, if that's okay with the rest of the council.
Request from council. Bruce, if you can check your calendar and see if you're free, March 2nd.
I will make sure I'm available.
Outstanding and kudos to you and your team. Like to echo what Kat said and looking forward to hearing more about it at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Minutes, looking at the minutes from our past meeting, we motioned to consider filing the minutes as is. For somebody from council, from Bruce Titler, do we have support? Jackie Chapman? And then microphones on, please, so we can hear you. Counsel, are there any questions or concerns regarding minutes from our last meeting? Hearing none, all those in favor of filing the minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we file the minutes. I'm going to ask, and it sounds like a lot when I say four agenda items, but I would like to add four agenda items after number two. And a presentation from Dr. Kanita Colville from SUNY Cortland, the sociology department, on the survey that was administered regarding Executive Order 203. And like to put that third on the agenda. And in addition, after that, there's information that came to council. We had a recent paperwork recently filed for a retiree. And so it would actually be three agenda items that are all related. Lifting the hiring freeze, promoting a firefighter to captain and hiring a firefighter effective March 11. With council's approval, can we add those? Any objections? Very good. And at the end, we will be talking about an executive session at the end of this evening's meeting. For the record, Troy Beckwith is with us from the sixth ward. So he is here and will be voting and did vote. Troy, you did vote on the minutes, correct? Very good. So we will make sure that is reflected in the minutes. Agenda item number one is a presentation by Family and Children Counseling Services in the Cortland Area Community That Cares Group on community actions to fight illicit drugs in the community. So I had reached out. I know that there's been a lot of concern and angst, myself and many others, with some of the fatalities and everything else that has been happening over the last year and then some. So I reached out. I know that Matt Whitman, Lisa Herschel and others are doing great work. And I asked if they would present. And we've got the opportunity to hear from them today. Who, what will be Lisa and Matt? I will ask, are you two presenting or how do, how would you like to do this?
So Brian, we, I sent you a copy of the PowerPoint. I don't know if you have a technology person that can pop it up. If not, if you can hand the baton to, oh, Brian, it looks like you're starting your screen sharing. This is great. Excellent. Thank you. So I'm here tonight as the executive director and CEO of Family and Children's Counseling Services with Sarah Watros, who is leading the charge when it comes to the epidemiology and research piece at CACDC now, and Matt Whitman, who is overseeing and is the executive director at Cortland Area Communities That Care. When, when Brian reached out to me to say, what can we do and what's going on? I, I, I said to him point blank, there's so much going on when it comes to trying to support our substance use community and our mental health community. And, and I think it's important that people know that if you don't know what's happening, it doesn't mean that it's not happening. And I felt that this was an opportunity for us to highlight what's, what's happening and how you all can help. So I really want to highlight Matt and Sarah and Alex Mikowski, who's the head of our mobile outreach program on our addiction side and also a very active in our prevention program because they're doing the real work, right? So I, I'd like Matt to start, if you could, Matt, with the first couple of slides, talking about where we are right now. I don't think that people recognize just how seriously our communities are being impacted, not just by COVID, but, but have been impacted for the past number of years with something that I call the, the other pandemic, which is the mental health pandemic. Matt, you got so much insight into what's going on, especially with our youth. So if you'd start, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you, Lisa. So as Lisa said, I'm Matt Whitman. I'm the director of Cortland Area Communities That Care. And I think really what we're going to touch on is, is three things that Lisa kind of spoke to. One, what is happening? Two, what is going on to address some of those things that are happening? Because there is a lot, as Lisa stated. And then three, really, you know, what can everyone be doing to be involved in some of the crises that we're seeing? So in terms of what's happening, I'm sure all of you have been aware of the increases in overdose-related fatalities that we saw in 2020, really the later half of 2020. And at least initially, that seems to have continued into 2021, where we have seen an increase from 2019 and even 2018 in the number of opioid-related fatalities or just drug-related fatalities in the community. And when you think about what's happening, you know, you have a, really a series of different crises all happening all at once, right? So we have a pandemic happening. And then underneath that, you have the opioid crisis and really an overdose crisis that hasn't really stopped. It has just continued and been exacerbated by conditions related to the pandemic. And then on top of that, as Lisa stated, you have a mental health crisis and really a developing mental health crisis that's somewhat related to conditions around the pandemic, but also has been kind of underlying, you know, underneath all these issues for quite some time. And so you, you have these things kind of working off each other, kind of creating a storm where not only are our systems being stretched thin in terms of how we respond to these crises, but also people are being stretched thin and how they can respond and deal with these underlying crises that we're dealing with. So when you think about mental health, you know, there's a lot of concern about suicide, increases that we might see over the last year and this year. You know, child abuse and maltreatment reports have been very concerning coming out of the county and across New York State. In the Cortland County Mental Health Department, you know, is continually responding to crises and issues around mental health that we see in the community. If you go to the next slide. And so all of these crises are kind of underlined by other problems that we have been facing as a community and really as a, as a field, trying to address some of these substance use and mental health-related crises. You know, as I mentioned, you know, an overwhelmed and underfunded support system that's increasingly reliant on grant funds. This is something Lisa and I deal with every day that, you know, we're expected to deal with these population level crises with the grant of the hour. And those come with timelines and funding restrictions. And, and not only that, we're being increasingly put in a very competitive situation to compete for that funding, not with, not just with each other, but other communities where it's common that a grant might come down from New York State that's for an entire region and five counties are pitted against each other to compete for that funding. And, you know, if you get it, great. If you don't, then you're going without those resources. And so that's a very challenging environment to be really dealing with on top of trying to address some of these underlying conditions and crises that we're dealing with. You know, staffing on top of that is a challenge. Finding qualified people that, that want to take these positions. These are very challenging positions to take when you think about counseling and treatment services. You know, these are very stressful jobs that's really burden people. And in finding, you know, good people to fill those positions, I know Lisa deals with this every single day at her agency, and that's a real challenge. You know, I talked about the underlying pandemics. You know, there's been really a crisis of despair for years. I mean, really deaths of despair are something that have been talked about for a long time. When you think about suicides and drug overdoses, a lot of these things, again, have been compounded by the conditions that we find ourselves in right now. And then, you know, ultimately, you know, a lot of competing values at the local level, at the state level, at the national level. You know, we've seen this with other things in the last year. Without coordination amongst all of these, of these different systems, it's very challenging to address, you know, the drug epidemic and the opioid crisis, the overdose crisis, when you don't have everyone on the same page. Policies sometimes don't match at the state level, what we're trying to do at the local level. And this is a very slow process to make some of these changes that we have to really put in place to see the progress that we want and really start making progress on the overdose crisis. So if you go to the next few slides.
Matt, can I just jump in here too when it comes to, to some issues that the, that the Cortland County Mental Health Department and, and other providers, including ourselves, are dealing with when it comes to staffing? I think people need to understand that we have not seen an increase in our funding from the state level in over 11 years. And yet we're, we're paying more for healthcare for our staff. We're paying more for services and for other costs of doing business. We are constantly expected to do more with us. And I think it's important that people recognize that the competitive grant environment only supports those individual providers who have substantive grant development and institutional giving programs. Thank God for Carol Titler, right? Because she's writing grants constantly. Thank God for Matt and, and his group who are constantly writing grant proposals. These are extensive book-level documents that need to be submitted to statewide agencies in competition with not just statewide providers, but often with, with national providers. And, and it, it's, it's, it's rather lazy on the part of our governmental entities. They would rather pit us against each other to fight for fewer and fewer dollars than to just support basic-level services in mental health and addictions. And I, I don't want to sound as though I'm asking you to feel sorry for us. I want you to understand what the environment looks like. If you are an individual who is engaged in a higher-credential educational experience where you're looking at $70,000 to $80,000 in student loan debt, the fact that I can hire you for less than a teacher's salary, which is already not terrific, makes it very difficult for you to be able to pay student loans, to live a fruitful life, while I'm also asking you to engage in treatment for those individuals who are suffering the most horrifying traumas that you can possibly imagine. And this has just been exacerbated by the pandemic. So I just want people to recognize what our staff is dealing with, what our providers are dealing with, what these individuals who are providing services are dealing with. I consider these people to be frontline workers. I consider these people to be first responders. But they're first responders to an aspect of our lives that we often take for granted. So I just wanted to make sure that I, I made that statement because I think we are very fortunate to have the providers in our community that we have that are working together to provide these supports. Excuse me, Matt, please keep going.
Thank you, Lisa. And yeah, I'll just kind of go through the next few slides. So obviously, you all probably saw some of these reports of the increases in overdose deaths that we're seeing, especially from the law enforcement perspective. If you could skip to the next slide. And then the chart after that. And so I just wanted to quickly give you a little sense of, you know, how we got here. I'm sure a lot of you have seen charts like this. I have probably presented some of this. I I'm sure a lot of you have have seen charts like this. I have probably presented some of this data to some of you in the in the past. Um but give you a sense of where where we are and how we got here. So really, when you think about the opioid crisis and and really the overdose crisis, it it really has happened in three waves. Um so the first wave was the rise of prescription opioid overdose deaths that resulted from a a lot of over over prescribing and the kind of rethinking of of pain from the prescriber standpoint. Um and and that kind of lasted through the 2000s, early 2010s, and and then that transitioned to heroin. Um so then you saw the rise of heroin overdoses um and and that kind of lasted through 2015, 2016. As those two crises started to try to level out and or decline, then we saw the rise of synthetic opioids. And so really fentanyl, this is what we're talking about here. So from 2015 on, you can see the large increase here, and that's really what a lot of communities are dealing with now. And I'll be honest, I think a lot of communities really didn't have answers for how we were going to deal with with fentanyl. It's so much more powerful than than other opioids that, you know, we had been addressing, that that's where you're seeing the bulk of overdose deaths happen, at least nationally. If you go to the next slide, this is some local trends. Um so really overdoses over the last, you know, six or seven years have kind of varied uh to a certain extent, and these are specific overdose deaths. Um so in in 2017, we kind of had this spike, um and this is a a crude rate, so this is rate per 100,000. We had a dip in 2018, started to increase again in 2019. And then obviously, as we know what happened in 2020, that number continued to increase significantly into 202020 or 2020, uh and then probably again into 2021. And then on the next slide. Um and 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 so again, this kind of shows, you know, overdose rates by by all substances, by opioids, and then in relation to male and female. It's a pretty, you know, what we've always said about the opioid crisis, i- it doesn't really discriminate, right? Anyone can be impacted by this crisis, and and I think we've seen that both locally, statewide and and nationally. And then the last few things I'll talk about on on the last slide. Um, you know, the other things that we're seeing due to to COVID, um specifically, if you go to the next slide, there we go. Um, you you know, a a lot of the the co-occurring conditions that I spoke at about a little earlier, you know, increases in mental health, suicide, deviation. Um substance use disorders, um increase in alcohol. Uh, you know, I'm sure some of you saw the reports that when when lockdown happened, there was a huge spike in in alcohol sales and deliveries, mostly to the adult population. Um, we haven't seen those trends as much in the youth population, which is actually one of the positives uh a- about thi- this last year. We we haven't seen huge, you know, very significant increases in youth use necessarily. Um, you know, increase in recreational cannibal uh cannabis sales and in also, you know, anecdotal reports of increase in overdoses, which is is why we're here presenting. You know, one of the issues with, you know, understanding what's happening is that the lack, uh, there's always a a lag in data, right? So we don't necessarily always know what's been happening until we can see the data about what's been happening. And sometimes those indicators lag. I think there's also a lot we don't know about what's happening specific to overdoses. For instance, you know, there could be a lot of conditions around the pandemic that might be leading to an increase in overdoses. If people are more inclined to use drugs alone and they don't have another person there that potentially administered Narcan, which you'll hear more about later. That could be increasing risk. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that are playing into this that I think we're still trying to fully understand. But then also, we're taking action and there's a lot of things that are happening to uh respond to these crises that um you're going to hear about a a little later. So I'm going to turn it back over to Lisa and she's going to cover some things uh in this section.
Brian, if you can go to the next slide, I would appreciate that. So, you know, you called me and and said, what 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 can I do? What are we doing? Um, and I often hear that, why don't they do something? And, you know, I I I try to respond with we are they. And one of the first things I think that it's important to recognize that is especially with the opioid crisis. People often uh dismiss those individuals who are suffering with opioid use disorder as junkies or 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 use terminology that's that's um indicative of personal failure. I think we need to recognize the reality of the fact that many people who are experiencing opioid use disorder. Started out by taking prescription drugs that were provided to them by their trusted physician. And that then we determined that these were dangerous substances and thus just cut off the supply. And then we left those people out in the dark when it came to allowing them to access treatments for those re- very real uh problems. That that caused their opioid use in the first place, you know, chronic pain, uh surgery, other, even dental procedures. The number one prescriber right now of opioids is the orthodontic community, which I don't think anybody really recognizes. So, you know, we've created a system where we we tell people you shouldn't engage in, you know, you you shouldn't have to have pain. We're going to give you medication for the pain and then give you an opportunity to access medications that alleviate the pain. And then we tell you that you're a failure because you are trying to treat your pain and then we take it away. And and to some extent, that creates the specifics around opioid disorder. But this this idea that we are dealing with a pandemic of despair is a mental health crisis that is very closely linked to our addictions concerns. Eighty percent of our clients that we see in our clinic have both a mental health and a substance use disorder. Many people who engage in substance use are engaging in substance use specifically because they have experienced trauma in their lives. And it has not been adequately treated, it has not been adequately identified. We we have clinics in every single school in Cortland County to try and address these issues. So again, when when people say, why don't they do something, we are they. That means the city council, that means the county ledge, that means every individual that we touch with information and with 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 um commentary. Is a part of the solution. So I'll give you an example. We're getting so many uh referrals to our mobile crisis program, our mobile uh treatment program for substance abuse through the city police department. We are so grateful to Cortland PD for what they do to it to to provide services to those in need and to connect them to us for services. The hospital, on the other hand, has not been as proactive and and I wish they would be. They could provide us with referrals in a more active way to those individuals who are experiencing mental health and or addictions issues, and they're not. So I thought that this forum was an opportunity for us to 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 tell people exactly what is happening. What we are doing as a treatment community and what uh you as a member of the Portland community can do to help support us. As we support those individuals in need of mental health and and addiction services in our community. So I want to turn the next slide over to, in fact, show me the next slide. So here are some of the local providers that are responding. This is just a sampling of the individual organizations that are providing services in our community. Anytime you need services or you know someone who needs services, hook into 211, call dial 211 on your cell phone. Uh, Google 211 Portland and you can get information on services provided by all these folks. Um, we are a community that is fully supported by a provider network that is committed uh to providing the best and highest quality services. Um, I think C A C T C has done a lot of really great work when it comes to the research piece and the 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 back. Helping to provide the backbone of some of the services that are being provided and some of the more recent uh activities that they've engaged in, I think are important. Somebody asked Sarah if you could talk a little bit about your role at C A C T C and what you're doing in the research field and and trying to lay the groundwork for future activities.
Thanks, Lisa. Uh, hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Watrous, and I work as the project director for the Healing Communities Project um at C A C T C. Um, so a few years ago, uh, Cortland County was uh chosen to participate in this groundbreaking study called the Healing Community Study. Um, and it really launched last year. So the Healing Community Study, it's funded by the National Institutes of Health and SAMSA. Uh, it's part, it's taking place right now across four states, 67 communities, and Cortland County is one of them. And the whole thing here is we're looking at what do we know to be true based on, you know, current available research, uh, you know, best practice. And how do we work with local communities to implement strategies to reduce overdose deaths? So the overall goal of this study is to reduce uh opioid related overdose deaths by 40% over the three-year grant period. Uh, but it's a research study, so they separated us into two separate uh cohorts. And one group is kind of a control group, and we landed in this control group. So we don't technically start in full implementation of this research study grant until July of 2020. So we still have almost a year and a half uh where we're not fully in this implementation phase. But what they have done that really increases our capacity to take action is that they gave us a funding to bring on two staff people. So it's myself and then we have a full-time data coordinator. And our role is really to um help facilitate collaboration amongst agencies in Cortland County and the region. Um, have a lot of time and resources to dig into available data and research and figure out exactly what's happening in our community. With the idea that when we figure out and and we know what's happening, then we can take action in a way that's much more strategic. Um, and find solutions that really work for our community, right? This idea that a solution that works for another community far away is not going to necessarily work for us. Um, so we've been really lucky in the past, uh, you know, eight plus months that I've been on board, working on this project to work with ton of community providers that are doing this work in the community. And our role is really just to enhance and support and then fill gaps as we identify gaps. So you'll see the t- the term Healing Portland, and that's kind of what what we're branding this collaborative uh to be. Then I'll I'll turn it over to Matt to do the next two slides. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just quickly cover some of the the partners um in the community and and what they're doing is part of this larger initiative, both as working with Sarah. But also just to address the the opioid crisis and overdose crisis. So the Catholic Charities of of Cortland County um is a very essential partner in this system. You know, they provide residential and treatment programs, um comprehensive care coordination. Uh, one is really important thing that they've been doing, really kind of spearheading over the last few years too, is is a jail reentry program. So, you know, what happens, really thinking through what happens to someone when they come out of uh out of the the prison system? And and how do they kind of reintegrate into services and treatment in in the community? You know, we know that when someone goes into the jail, you know, they potentially go through uh non-medical detox if they have a substance use disorder. And and when they come out of jail, they're they're at a significant risk of of overdose because they've lost, you know, any tolerance they might have had. And and if they go back to to drug use, they they are are really potentially at at risk. And so that, you know, Cortland Catholic Charities has been really working on how do we support people uh coming out of of the prison, especially the the county jail. Um, and really get them this, linking them to the services that they need i- almost immediately. Um, and as some of you, they they will also run the Wishing Wellness Center um in downtown Cortland, which is really a peer peer service. So, you know, others would love to experience or helping people kind of navigate these systems and and deal with some of the the underlying conditions that they have. Um, the next slide, really quick. Uh, so also, I would just want to mention the Cortland County Community Services Board and Cortland County Mental Health. So I'm actually the chair of the Cortland County Community Services Board, which really meets monthly to kind of ensure um you coordination of services uh across developmental disability, mental health and substance use needs. Uh, so we meet, it's it's really a lot, a lot of the the leaders and and players in in the community there are are just trying to coordinate what's going on. Where are the gaps that were that we're seeing in in our community? And actually, starting last month, we have set aside monthly time on our agenda to specifically discuss the increases in overdoses that we're seeing in in, you know, what's happening. So we can better understand how to respond to it. You know, there are three subcommittees, Developmental Disability, Mental Health, and Chemical Dependency. I'm actually also the chair of the Chemical Dependency Subcommittee. So uh, you know, th- these meetings are open. We we welcome people to come and and kind of just listen and and learn what's going on or share opportunities. Um, but it's it's a really important process for our community to plan. Uh, wh- where do we need services? We go through a county planning process every year, and it's really, really important. It really links the Cortland County Mental Health Department, which provides, you know, key essential services in our community to all of those other players that are are doing these services across our 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 community and our region, really. Um, so I just wanted to give those two updates, and I think Lisa is going to talk a little bit uh about her agency once again.
So um just to speak briefly about the Community Services Board, that's really where, um, it's not just planning and it's not just conversation. Um, it's really where needs are identified within the community and then individual partners of of providers determine what they can offer in terms of services. So for example, when I uh started here at Family Counseling Services in 2012, Garrett Lloyd Lester and and Mark Thayer and Cortland County Mental Health and the CSP determined that there was a real need for mental health services in the high, in the in the schools. It's not something that was being provided, and we had conversations around that. But what it turned into was uh Family Counseling Services created our clinic services and and opened literally clinics in every school in Cortland County as a result of that work. Because we recognize that young people and families have need for clinics and can't access them necessarily easily by going to our clinic. Why not bring them to the schools and ensure that families and children can access the services right there? I would say that the jail reentry program is another great example of that. There was an identified need that the county jail folks are just so responsive to the needs of of those inmates that are are involved in services there. And and think about what they can do in terms of helping those those inmates get back in the community, become um productive members of society. And Catholic Charities Jail Reentry Program was really important um a- and and a result of that work. So again, when Brian says what's happening in the county or when someone says to me, what are they doing? I think it's important that you all recognize that this is the work that we do every every day. And that there is a lot happening that you may not be aware of, but that is actually occurring and is creating new services, new opportunities for families and 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 individuals to access services. We, along with Cortland County Mental Health, um Beacon Center and Syracuse Recovery System Services, uh provide mental health and addictions treatment services. Um, we provide services in five counties, we provide mobile outreach services, we provide clinic services in every school in Cortland County. And we provide care coordination services. I'm going to ask Alex and a little bit to talk a little bit more about what we're doing in the mobile crisis area because I think that's important. We have clinic services that we can drive to Cincy, that we can drive to Herkimer County, that we can drive to Oneida, that we can drive to Marathon. That we can literally take a fully functioning clinic in a car or a vehicle or a van and and provide medically assisted treatment to 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 individuals in need. So I think that's important. Um, so those are some of the things that we're doing in Cortland County. Um, Mental Health is doing a lot of the same services. I I also do want to touch on the regional um activities that we're engaged in. So Brian, if you can just uh pop that next slide in uh about the South Central Behavioral Healthcare Collaborative. We have been provided with 1.6 million dollars from the state to create a a a network of of eight count, 18 counties. Carol, you're going to kill me because I'm getting it wrong. Um, a- across our region where we're trying to create networks of service providers to make sure that we um have a full continuum of care for our residents, no matter where they are in the region. And that we're able to uh access grant funding and other um supports for addictions and recovery regionally. And one of the things that we're focusing on right now is a grant opportunity for overdose mapping and um Narcan distribution. So um Alex, I'm going to ask if if you and Sarah can sort of tag team the next couple of slides. The South Central Behavioral Care Collaborative is working on some of these things. So Sarah, Alex, I don't know which one of you, maybe Sarah, if you take the next two slides, and then Alex, you can talk about all the really great work that you're doing with um the CODI programs.
Sounds good. Uh, so as I mentioned, with with the Healing Portland Initiative, uh, our role has really been to try to enhance what all the awesome agencies and providers in Cortland County and the region are doing, and then to try to fill the gaps. So when I came on board in May, the first thing I did was really have a lot of one-on-one conversations with different providers, community stakeholders, to better understand what was happening and some of the needs. Um, and a few things kind of just came up naturally. Um, so uh, there was a lot of interest and excitement around OD MAP. So OD MAP is a software that allows first responders to input in real time or as close to real time um information about an overdose into a system, a centralized system. And so it it creates, first of all, real time data, which is awesome, but it also notifies key community leaders about what's happening. And then it provide, it creates a mechanism so that um we can respond to an overdose really quickly after it happens. So for example, a program like CODI that Alex uh works for can go to the scene of an overdose a few days later and and, you know, connect with that person or neighbors or family members. Um, it's different pieces of this already kind of exist, but we really were excited to try to. It's different pieces of this already kind of exist, but we really were excited to try to formalize this. So we're currently in the works with that. And then naloxone, we have a lot of different agencies that are doing work to distribute and raise awareness about naloxone. So the life-saving medication that will bring someone out of an overdose and, you know, save their life. But there wasn't necessarily this coordinated effort. And also there was this acknowledgement that we were training a lot of professionals, but maybe not necessarily getting it into the hands of people that need it the most. So we started meeting in about, in July, and this also coincided with family counseling, doing a lot more work and actually kind of becoming the key provider of naloxone in the community. And so it's been really awesome to see the work that's come out of that. And Alex will talk about that soon. So with Healing Portland, our focus, as I mentioned, we have a full-time data coordinator has been to do this comprehensive needs assessment. So to collect a lot of data and make sense of all of it. And so this assessment will actually be released hopefully in March. So we'll be sharing that with the broader community, our findings from that. So stay tuned for that. We continue to do work around OD Map, naloxone coordination. We've been doing a lot of just general awareness education for community members around overdose opioids, things that community members can do. So you can follow us at healingcourtland.org. We launched a website to kind of create this centralized hub of information. And we have a Facebook page. We have an amazing AmeriCorps member who does a lot of our outreach work. So she writes blog posts. She puts posts on social media. And tied to that has been work around stigma reduction. We find that there's still a lot of stigma around addiction and substance use, and that can be a huge barrier to people accessing the services. So again, this project is just kind of getting off the ground. In July 2022 is when the Healing Community Study really ramps up for us in Cortland County. We'll have more staffing, funding to actually support pilot initiatives at different agencies. So we're excited, but I'm just really happy to share with you what we're up to. And then Alex, who's been extremely involved in Healing Portland, I'm excited to have her share a little bit more about what she's doing specifically around Narcan. Really quickly, I wanted to mention about OD Map though. Lieutenant Guerrero at the City Police Department has been instrumental in working with us on this. So every week he pulls data on overdoses that allows us to see, you know, again, we're not quite there in terms of looking at overdoses in real time. But on a weekly basis, we're looking at all the overdoses, looking at trends and so on. And so we're really thankful for the partnerships and the support that we've had from law enforcement in this regard. Thank you.
Brian, why don't you just go that, thank you, show that slide 19. Sarah, anything else you want to say about that, that one slide? I mean, I think that's important. Knowing where overdose is happening is vital for us and for Alex and our CODI team. So we're literally driving the streets, trying to find those individuals who have, who have addiction issues, who have been identified by city and county police and Homer PD as having had an overdose. We wish we would get more information from the hospital in terms of referrals. We're not getting them. Most of the referrals and the information we're getting about overdoses are coming directly from city police and Homer PD. So that's, those are the folks that we're dealing with most intimately. So you can see what we're trying to do there, connect, respond, evaluate, prevent and share, trying to engage folks in treatment as, at where they are in their lives, where they live and where they, where they, they need to be treated. So Alex, I, I'm wondering if you might take the next slide and talk a little bit about some of the stuff that you've been doing out in the community. We've been so lucky to have Alex on our CODI team and to lead our CODI team and she's been doing great work. So Alex, I'm hoping you can talk a little bit about what we're doing when it comes to naloxone, explain a little bit about what that is. Tell the folks that, that we're out there and, and what we're trying to accomplish.
Definitely. So yeah, I'm really grateful to be able to be doing this work and getting Narcan into the hands of friends and family members, the neighbors, the coaches. And so, so yeah, so, so we're working both locally, regionally and with statewide agencies. If you want to go to the next slide. So we've done several pop-up events. So the first one was on an unusually sunny day in December. So that was that picture with no snow on the ground. Next slide, please. The next one was in about eight degree weather and frozen, but behind you, you see we have a mobile treatment van. So this is our RV that we can drive to the person's house, to the park, to wherever. In our next event is that the Salvation Army also partnering with the Southern Tier AIDS Program or STAP to also be on site with their services for the community. Next slide. And we also do virtual Narcan trainings. So twice a week. I do exactly this. I jump on and I do the quick and dirty five to 10 minute training and, you know, kind of move the person along and figure out how to get the Narcan to them, either to bring, bring the kit to them or for them to come to our office to pick it up. Next slide.
Me, if I can just explain what Narcan does. So if someone is overdosing and with fentanyl and the other synthetic opioids. If someone is actively overdosing, it means that their respiratory system is so depressed that they are at risk of heart failure. And Narcan is a nasal spray that one can use, that you get a kit for, and that you can literally bring that individual back to life. It's an, it reverses the effect of the opiate on the respiratory system. And you can actually bring someone who's actively overdosing back to life with this, this medication. It is not a, it's not like, you know, Pulp Fiction where you have to stab them with a needle to get them. It's literally a nasal spray and, and it's, it's really a miracle drug. It brings people right back to life. And it does no harm if they are not, if they're not overdosing. It does no harm. But if they are overdosing, it is absolutely vital to get that drug into their system immediately to bring their respiratory system back to life, back to, to, to function. What's frightening to us is that where you used to get two nasal sprays in a kit and you'd use one maybe for someone who might be overdosing from heroin. We're now seeing fentanyl, which is again, a synthetic opioid, opiate where people need two to four nasal spray administrations in order to overcome the significant impact of the synthetic fentanyl, which is really challenging and frustrating. And what we're trying to do is get these kits out to folks, to family members, so that they can, they can, they can save their family members' life. They can get them into treatment and we can engage with them in treatment. And I think it's very important that if we go back to these virtual trainings, that last slide that Alex just looked at, we're actually, in order to get an Narcan kit, you have to be trained. We will provide the kits. They are free of charge to anyone who wants them. And Alex is doing those trainings every week on Mondays and Wednesdays virtually. So you can literally use Zoom if you're an individual in your home and you know, you have a family member who is engaged in opiate use, where you can get that training. And then you can, on Zoom, and then we will coordinate getting you a kit so that you can get that information. And I'm going to get the Zoom link and put it in at the end of this presentation as a chat, as part of the chat.
Thank you, Lisa. Yep, it's also on the Healing Portland website, has the actual link right there. So you don't have to type anything in. Cause I know if you're, you're like me and you're joining a random Zoom meeting, sometimes the numbers can get confusing. So yeah, so, so harm reduction is a really big thing, trying to help people that are having a problematic relationship to substances. So we utilize peers, people that have lived through it. Southern Tier AIDS Program has a lot of great services in, including a needle exchange. So we get the needles off the street. And also they build a relationship with people as they exchange needles. So people are more likely to accept help. Reach Medical in Ithaca has really low threshold services for medication to help people that are struggling with opiate use. We know that people are more likely to live and more likely to stay in treatment if they are offered medication as a part of their recovery. Next slide, please. So, so language matters. It doesn't matter if you're talking to someone who has lung cancer, who is a smoker. How you say things really makes a really big difference for someone. So, so one of the newer ones is instead of somebody had a relapse, so they decided not, not to drink for a year and now they're starting to drink again. We say, well, that's a recurrence or they had a setback. It's not the end of the world. It's, it's just, you know, something happened. They're trying to get back towards it. So instead of they stayed clean, they're maintaining their recovery. So we try to think of them as a, as a human with a problem, not as a bad person who's a junkie, who's an addict, who's not worth anything. Because we know that people do recover and go on to lead amazing lives. And so we want to give them that opportunity. Next slide, please. So yeah, so, so how we can work together is a big one. We need, need more funding. The, the state is holding back more funding than ever before. We need to work on not having silos. So, so not looking at someone's mental health separate from someone's substance abuse. Cause we're all one human. You can't treat the substance abuse in the right arm and then treat the kidney failure in the left leg. We need more, more people in positions of power to take action, to, to speak up when you hear something that someone says that that's not accurate or that there's, there's no hope here. There's no services here. If someone were to call me right now with, you know, and say, I, I want to go to detox, I'd be like, okay, let's have a brief conversation. If I was on the clock, I'm, I'm going to call the detox facility. We're going to either get you in a car there or help you figure out a way there. So, so there is action that can be taken. We often kind of throw our hands up and say, well, I guess I can't do anything. So, so definitely call 211, reach out, like all these agencies on Facebook and all of their cool things. So Lisa, I think that's the end of the slide. So did you want me to do that, the quick five-minute Narcan training?
Why don't you just do it super fast so people can see? You can ask for a kit if you go to our Healing Communities link. Why don't you quickly show people what you do when you do a Narcan training?
Yeah. So, so this is the exact quick and dirty. And by you listening to this, if you tell me that you are here, then I can get whatever information that you feel comfortable sharing and I will get you a kit tomorrow. So as Lisa said, this is what Narcan looks like. It's a nasal spray. So you just take it out of the package, put it in their nose and you press the red plunger. If they, they don't respond within a minute or two, then you give the second dose. You use whatever's closest to you. And so if the Narcan kit's next to you and your phone's across the, the house, use the kit first. As Lisa said, Narcan doesn't interact with any other diagnosis or medication. So we've had situations where a person was actually dealing with a diabetic crisis. Local police or family member gave Narcan because like they, they just didn't know. Nothing bad happens from it. Which is an awesome thing. The most common side effects are a runny nose. And if they are, are in an overdose, they're all of a sudden thrown into withdrawal. So they can feel a little quote unquote dope sick. So they, they don't feel well. But they're, they're breathing again and breathing is helpful. Within the kit, we include instructions on kind of what to do. So you know, you know, step by step what to do if you feel comfortable. We do include the rescue breather. It's helpful all the time, but especially in COVID. So if you're giving someone mouth to mouth, that you're not getting any of their breath in your mouth. We also include something on building a safety plan. And so there's information on how to not use alone, how to take care of yourself, finding a safe space. Also information about the NCAP program. So you can go to your local pharmacy. Your, your insurance pays for the part and then the state program pays for the other section of it. Because this actual medication costs almost $200. And so it's great that the state gives it to us for free and we get to just pepper the community with it. The other thing that's important to, to mention is the Good Samaritan Law. And so that protects both the person that's experiencing the overdose and the person calling 911 from, from criminal charges, as long as it's not an A1 felony. And so don't clean up the, the scene or worry if you come across someone as you're walking into the gym, you know. So what if they have something on them? What if they have a needle on them? They're, they're not going to be charged by that. If there are other people present and they have things on them, those people could get criminal charges. So we encourage people, if, if you don't want to interact with the police or you have, you know, probation parole is, is on you to call 911, leave really clear instructions and then go wait across the street, be the bystander, make sure the police get to the person. Because it's really hard. We've worked with a lot of people who have lost a friend because they were too scared to, to call and get help. Narcan works for 30 to 90 minutes. And so if you don't want to call the police, they suggest to stay with the person for up to three hours. I know my life is busy and I'm not going to wait with anybody. I want to get somebody help. So, so I'm going to call first responders so they can get to the person. The kits do best in human temperature. So it's best to put them in a bag, not in a car. They expire after a year or so and the expiration date's listed right on the kit. So you can know, you know, when it's less effective, but the medicine doesn't become evil when it expires, just becomes less potent. So yeah, so now I've been officially trained in Narcan. And so just reach out if you would like to have a kit, let other people know. Our goal is to get it out there. Because we know that people can be saved and there are people in, in our community that we want to give them another opportunity, give their family members, their, you know, friends, their loved one, their, their jobs, another chance. So, so thank you so much for your time and I will turn it back over to Lisa.
Thank you. Well, I know that was a lengthy presentation. I think what, what I want you to walk away from this with is the point is if someone is suffering from an addiction or mental health affliction, that, that there is help. That if someone is overdosing or engaged in opiate use, that there is support, that you can save someone's lives, someone's life, and then call our CODI team and get them engaged in trying to reach out to that individual and help that individual find a path to treatment and to, to getting his or her life back. Because the goal isn't to just throw these people's lives away, but to give them the chance to become who they were meant to be. And I think that's very important. So that's all I have. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I think, you know, this is a constant conversation, not one conversation. So I'm, I'm more than happy to, and I know our people are happy to answer questions as, as you may have them.
Very good. Thank you, Lisa and everybody. Counsel, do we have any questions for the presenters this evening?
I, I don't have a question so much as, first of all, thank you for doing this. Wow, it was a lot to process. And there is a lot going on. And, and I guess the simple thing is if I'm really not sure resource-wise where to go, if I just dial 211 or go to Google 211, that would give me an agency. And then that's a short, simple way for me to, to start my journey on trying to help somebody. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes, absolutely. And, and so even if it doesn't give you the, the perfect resource, it will get you started. And even during the day, they have a web chat feature. So you can type in your question or the resource you're trying to find. So you're trying to find, you know, what are the hours of the food pantry in Truxton? Cause you have your, your aunts there and now at seven o'clock at night, she says she needs food. Because you have your your aunts there, and now it's seven o'clock at night. She says she needs food. Two one one is a great resource. Always feel free to to uh reach out if you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate the very thorough and in-depth presentation, because there's a lot of people who have expressed concern. A lot of people wonder what's happening. Uh, it's nice to know that there are opportunities where people can get involved and that there's planning going into it, and uh, so our waitress, in terms of planning in next couple of years, that hey, we're taking steps, and this is not a new problem. I mean, the war on drugs has been something since the early seventies, and it's a constant battle, but
Yeah, it's just one of those things, Brian, where if it were an easy, if there were an easy solution, i- i- it wouldn't be a problem.
Well, and I echo what you said earlier. This is a we problem. It's not what are they doing? What are we doing? Um, I've gone and gotten the Narcan training. I would encourage others to do. You were here, so reach out to Alexandra, get the kit, and pay attention.
Alice, can you give the CODI number, seven four nine zero zero? What's the what's the CODI number? Can you give that number for me?
Yes, um, uh, six zero seven, seven four nine, zero zero one four. That's a a cellphone, so you can both call and text. Um, I generally work nine to five. Um, after hours, we only respond to the Cortland City Police.
Six oh seven, seven four nine, zero zero one four?
Correct.
Okay, so that is in the chat. If anybody would like to hold on to that number in case you need it.
The goal is to get people in treatment. It's not to save their lives, get them into treatment, so make those referrals, help us help folks who need support.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. So it's an ongoing issue. It's an ongoing problem, but we we need people to be involved and engaged, and the work that you're doing is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Agenda item number two is consideration of a resolution approved the subordination of a city mortgage to facilitate the refinancing of an existing mortgage pursuant to the recommendation of the city's loan review committee. Uh, council members, microphones, if you can turn them on, and motion by Katie Selman, second John Bennett, discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. Asked to add for agenda item number three, we have another guest, Dr. Mary Canita Covell from the SUNY Cortland Sociology Department. And as a quick refresher, the governor passed executive order two oh three, which mandates that any municipality with a law enforcement agency must reimagine, re-envision what we're doing regarding law enforcement. We had four community meetings. These took place in the fall, and they were on different days, different times to facilitate people's ability to attend at least one of the meetings. We've also been working collaboratively with several members from the community, and the community survey that Dr. Canito Covell helped us to administer was a third and important piece for us to evaluate what's going on. Uh, Mary, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to share with you the results of this survey. So I am going to do a shortened version of this presentation in ten minutes or less. I don't know about you, but we're about at the popcorn stage of the night. So um, so if after I present, whatever questions you have or whatever areas you'd like me to expand upon, please don't hesitate to do that. And also, I welcome if you'd like to have a longer conversation at another time, that that we could do that as well. So I do have um a visual to share. Would you like me to just share screen? You have you have blocked me from doing so, Mayor.
Uh, let me look here.
Do I need to pass a resolution to be able to share my screen?
Apparently. I'm having a hard time finding where I can multiple. One can share at a time.
So I will, while you're um working on that, I can share a little bit of the background of that before I show you the these slides, and then if that doesn't work, we will figure it out. But so the survey, uh, our goal um in calculating how many we needed to get in order to have a statistically significant number, that goal number was three hundred and seventy-seven. We had four hundred and seven total returned, three hundred and eighty-two were done electronically, twenty-four were hard copy paper uh copies of the survey, and then one was done verbally via phone uh by a participant who was not able to to do either the survey by um the computer or on paper form. When we look, um, and and Mary, you can just interrupt me when, if you are able to give me host privileges or allow me to do so, but I'm sorry?
I I think I made it so that you can.
It it did work. Okay. So
Another year of practice.
No, no, you're fine. So I'm going to share screen now and do play from the start. Okay. Uh, so as I give you the overview of the statistics, so when we look at the race uh of participants, we're seeing the data mirror our data for the um for our population, so that's encouraging news that we're receiving data back that is closely paralleling what our community represents. Uh, our gender, a majority of females answered the survey, a- and we did have um a slightly larger-than-population percentage of Hispanic, Latino, Latina, and Latinx folks respond. So folks uh that have been living in the city for um zero to ten years were the majority of folks responding, although uh I was pleased to see that the proportions were pretty even or throughout uh the the rest of the the years there. Uh, we had one person that was there for over seventy years, so that was encouraging. Age age is pretty, uh, again, pretty standard throughout uh the age spans and and education and income as well. So we we got a good mix of folks responding to this survey. One of the uh most, I guess, the the important piece that we were all looking for was what was the the level of satisfaction with our law enforcement and both the department and our officers individually. Most folks reported that they were satisfied. A a good chunk of folks, over a quarter of people, participants responded that they were very satisfied, and and then you can see the rest as well. So one of the things that we asked about was the perceptions of crime, and what was important for asking this was, and asking how folks felt in their neighborhood, was to gauge how, not only how they spoke directly about officers and the department, but also how the um theoretically, the job of the officers was impacting their their lived experiences within their neighborhoods. So most folks uh did not feel that crime had increased or did not really alter their um their actions because of their fear of crime. In the qualitative data, which I'll talk about at the end, in the section where folks could expand upon what they had put in the survey for the quantitative quantitative data, many people talked about uh how they felt safest on the outskirts of town, and as they moved into the center of the city, they felt less safe. Uh, the neighborhood safety, so the folks generally felt safest during the day and in their own home rather than at night. And the things that folks responded as being the largest neighborhood problems were automobile break-ins and thefts and speeding. We got lots and lots and lots of comments about speeding and that uh folks were not satisfied with our level enforcement of of speeders. When we look at officer actions, we see that most folks wo- felt that officers acted within the law and they were fair and neutral, and while there were some cases of officers using racial slurs, speaking with homophobic language, and using language offensive to women, the majority of folks uh did not report that they felt that that was the case. However, we see throughout this uh this section, many folks responding neutral. And this was something that we asked about perceptions in this piece, because the perceptions can often indicate how folks will interact with an officer once they come in contact with them. So we wanted to know about the perceptions, as well as how folks were responding who had had direct contact with officers. Then, so many folks, even though i- it specified that we were asking about perceptions, did not feel comfortable giving perceptions without having an interaction, and they told us that in the qualitative portion. So that's where that neutral, we see the the high response of neutral throughout. Again, the department, we asked questions about how the department was uh perceived and their ability to build connections with community members. I'll talk more about that in the qualitative portion as well. Body cameras were overwhelmingly encouraged and supported, and there was a belief that the use of body cameras would be something that would improve uh community and police relations. So about half of the people responding to the survey were had had contact in the last twelve months with an officer. This contact could have been through a stop, or it could have been they actively called and and asked, or there was another reason for them to be in contact with police. But uh the majority felt that they had been treated with respect in the la- during that contact. And uh many felt that the response time was pretty much on par, although there was some grumbling about it being too slow, or that folks never came. So the qualitative responses uh were broke into uh five sections. There were positive, there was positive feedback, there was feedback about quality of life, systemic issues, addressing bias, so direct ways that folks wanted bias to be addressed, and then they had things to tell me about that survey. So the uh positive officer actions, thirty-one percent of the comments were to comment that they felt that officers deserve more respect, more recognition, and thanking them for the service. So a third, about a third of those comments. Then uh we had a good section of comments begging for speeders to be held accountable and to not go over thirty miles per hour, that there were noise complaints, specifically from campus and student housing, that they felt that there was a lot of drug use, and so that that was affecting residents' quality of life. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, that location seemed to be a key in in how folks were describing these quality of life issues. The systemic issues that were mentioned had to do with New York, New York State bail reform, so many folks felt that the bail reform was going to impede an officer's job. They felt that poverty or homelessness was affecting the officer's ability to do an effective job. They commented on wanting more multidisciplinary approaches, so when I say that, I'm talking about um the mental health that's uh the mental health collaboration that's already in place, but expanding upon that for more calls, so having more folks who are uh not law enforcement officers, responding with law enforcement officers. And then there were many comments about mental health uh for looking for officers to be more aware of mental health of residents, but also uh showing of concern for the mental health of officers as well. The addressing bias, there were calls in in the qualitative portion for bias to be addressed by through transparency. So this transparency in- included training of officers and a showing of accountability, so how folk, how officers had addressed particular situations, but how they had been uh held accountable. There were more calls for community policing, although that wasn't necessarily clear what folks meant by community policing. In some cases, that meant more foot patrols or bicycle patrols, but in other cases, that was left up to the discretion of the reader. Uh, there was, they had, there's a perception um that there are majority white male officers, so there wanted uh diversity of officers being recruited. And there was a call for an official, multiple calls for an official denouncement of racism. So uh this, they were looking for a a uh statement by the department. Folks uh in some cases told us that they were pleased to participate in this survey and have the opportunity to do so. They explained neutral responses, talked about trouble with software, they uh and that neutral, that the negative interactions, so they felt that the survey was asking too much about negative interactions and didn't like that. And then that there was a need to address additional biases, so on the same token, they wanted us to do more and 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 names other specific biases. So i- if we were to look forward in directly implementing these results, some of the ways in which we may do that, that are lower cost, is increasing communication with community members that can be done through uh in in the chief and I have have spoken somewhat about this, so he has some ideas about how he would do that, using social media, uh but also in there were naming of particular officers, which are were doing a a fantastic job, some folks felt with communicating communicating with community members, so increasing those efforts as well. Utilizing multidisciplinary teams, as we talked about. Uh, a look at proactive versus community policing methods, so ways in which resources could be shifted from a particular proactive methods. And we know that resources are slim, and of many officers feel that they are tapped out. So how can resources be shifted in ways that uh build upon both the abilities of officers to do with what they have and then the community needs? Uh, putting out an official statement denouncing racism, and then uh in looking at when there was a discussion about denouncing racism, there were multiple calls to to denounce um what many folks, what some folks felt was a decisive push at a backing of the thin blue line group, and so uh I propose that we see, we discuss with officers officially how we would gain support for officers without um supporting things that community members feel are decisive. So how can we, how do would officers feel that they would best be supported? And how and what are ways that we can do that? Then looking, uh, so higher costs at to addressing some of the questions that folks had or or issues that folks had would be adopting bo- more body cameras and and but the cost of not only the the actual hardware, the the cameras, but then maintaining that would be very expensive, so that would be one of the higher-cost um ways to implement some of these results. Um, I look for additional feedback. If you have them or other questions that you may have, I will um, I will open that up now.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a question.
Katie Selman.
So I'm really pleased that this survey shows that our police are by and large doing a good job. My my concern is that we have so few minorities there's no way to break out minority voices to see if we're doing a good job with that part of our community. Correct?
So I I pulled out the data from folks who identified as being non-white, and there was also a group of folks who selected other and then expanded upon that, and that included primarily white ethnics and non-race answers, so folks wrote human um and for that response. So in in when I I pulled out the data for folks who were answering as a person of color, that data still showed that they had had positive interactions, uh but that there it but it was interesting to also look at the data around folks who were the perceptions that they had, so folks who had not had interactions and the perceptions that they had. And and those perceptions are important. They're not just thoughts. They they can dictate how any of us would act on on it during one of these interactions. So addressing those perceptions seems very key. Um, but but in in the larger report, I I polled some of the responses that where folks had had negative reactions, and um I've been in conversation with Mayor and Chief about what that means for having, you know, for the ways in which folks name very particular instances and how you might address those in case they are happening systemically, or in case they are happening more often. And and so those, I I don't And, and so those, I, I don't mean to say that we aren't addressing those issues at all. They, they definitely are. And, you know, that, that was part of the call for this survey was they want to know what's happening.
Right, but it's, but I take your point that people, people aren't aware of what are the good things that are happening. And so their perceptions are colored by a lot of other things, sometimes things that have nothing to do with our specific police department. So we.
And also, I mean, in addition to, if things are going well, what we need to also look at the instances where they are going well so that there are fewer negative instances. And so how do you build upon them and what are folks saying about them as well? So nobody is, is saying that there aren't negative things happening. And no one is saying that, that there aren't things to be done. So, you know, that, that has been something that has been addressed through this as well.
I understand there's, there's definitely room for improvement, but they're doing a lot of things well and they can expand on those as well. And we need to broadcast that.
Yes.
Thank you for all of your work.
You're welcome.
Tom Michaels.
You had, you had one individual that noted that the police didn't respond to a call. Can you elaborate on that at all?
So allow me, I, I think that was a percentage of folks who said that they had never come. They'd never responded. And so that one, I, I have to go back and look at the data and I can, I can certainly do that and get back to you with more certainty. But with that, I believe that call was, there, there were a few comments about domestic violence calls. And that may have been a domestic violence call. There was also a breakdown, a discussion about breakdown. So the police had never come to that. So in, in the larger report, I addressed the discussion around domestic violence and the, the perception that the respondent had had about their interaction with, with the officer during the domestic violence call. And, you know, the, the things that they noted as being said during that time felt offensive to them. And so they, so these are things that in the lower cost ways to address this would be particular types of training that are effective, that aren't just to check a box, but trainings that are effective in giving officers tools with language, specific language that can be used in those situations. So those were things that, you know, that could be addressed as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments that you would like to make on the report from Dr. Canito Cobell?
Yeah, I have a question, Brian, but Jackie was ahead of me.
Jackie.
In one of the charts, treated with respect, it was 8% that was not treated with respect. I wonder, is there any correlation? I was given a statistic recently that our community is about 70% black and brown people or people of color. I, I didn't, is there any correlation with that or anything? And you also had a, in one of the early, I don't, I don't remember, in one of the early charts, there was something that related back to that, to broad a question doesn't really relate.
Well, that, that's okay. So there's a couple of things that I could say about that. First of all, respect is subjective. Respect is culturally different. So what respect means to one person varies. So the, the, one of the limitations of using a survey in this way is that you have to have folks rely upon their understanding of respect. So what that means to them. And you're able to, through coding of the qualitative data, really infer what, what is happening in those situations, although some people did directly indicate what they meant. But when you said, so the data that I have around population data from the census is not that there are 72% black and brown folks. So I'd be interested in, in comparing and looking at that data and, and looking at, you know, if, if that's the case. And so the, the census is reporting a population, the most recent numbers were 92.6% white. So if we're seeing large discrepancies in the data there between what the census is reporting and what other entities might be reporting, then perhaps one of the larger things that we could do with this is looking at a push for census completion for the next round, which is way down the road. But, you know, then building now to gain awareness for that. Because then hypothetically services aren't matching the needs of the citizens if that data isn't reflective in that way. So I, so I have a different, I have different statistics from the census. But again, when I, when I, I was able to pull the data out for how folks responded for, if they identified as a person of color and, and the numbers were pretty close to what they were for the larger population as well.
Thank you so much.
And if I may say also, so another limitation of the survey was the time constraint. So the time constraint of the executive order and needing that report in. We could move forward with a larger survey, which would be a census-based survey, which would require more time and more resources and would be most effective when we can be face-to-face with the public. So, you know, post-pandemic. And in doing that, you would then be able to directly ask more, first of all, more of the community, but then you would also be able to be more specific with your demographics and who you're asking for. So that could be, that could also be a larger scale project. That would also require more funding as well. We scraped together money for stamps and things like that as it was in the time constraint. So that's something that we could look forward to on a larger scale if we, if we, you know, if, to go forward with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very revealing, though, the entire survey. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mayor, I, I don't have a question so much as just a comment after we've spent so many months now discussing this issue, our police force and interactions with the community. What this sort of reinforces to me is a lot of the same things that we heard in many of these meetings that we heard in our public comment sections. It's all sort of very related. It doesn't seem to be anything that's really a huge disconnect of, well, geez, we heard this, but the survey. There seems a lot of similarities there. Which I guess, just sort of thinking out loud here, it, it, it sort of hits home with me. And Doc, you can correct me if I'm really wrong on this, please do. It seems like when someone says, you know, the police are doing a really good job and they have a difficult job and, and they're, you know, they need more support. That's an accurate statement for many people. And when others, somebody else says, you know, the police here, they don't treat everybody with respect. And, you know, I heard somebody use a racial comment or homophobic comment. That's an also accurate statement. So I see you shaking your head, so I feel a little better about what I just said there. So I guess go back to what Doctor and Katie were saying. There is some good news here, but we still have some work ahead of us as well. So that those folks, because I did the math, you know, 5% of the people believe they heard racial slurs. You know, you do the math, that's still, of the, of the 400 people that did the survey, that's like 20 people that responded that, that have that. So when you start using some numbers, it becomes to me a little more real. It starts to become, okay, these are real people. And so we do have some real issues, but the good news is we're also doing some, some really good work. And we're not starting from scratch. You know, we're sort of, this sort of reinforces the things that we've been learning since last May, I guess. So I'll just leave it at that. Doctor, is that making sense? Is that sort of an accurate way to look at this?
So that, that makes very good sense to me. And I, I think Mayor and Chief would also agree with that, that in, and this is part of the conversations we've had. So when I'm speaking with students about the ways that we approach curriculum, I encourage them to take what we call an intersectional approach. So looking at, so if we talk about women, for example, we can't talk about all women the same. There's not just one, one female experience. Depends on your race, your class, your sexuality, your ability status. And so the, you know, that's why I asked at the end as much extensive demographic data as I could without exhausting folks. Because we want to understand, you know, if someone identifies as a female, for example, of color from a higher class, then, you know, what are their experiences saying or across the board? And so, so we know that we, we didn't expect to have 100% in satisfaction. We expected that there would be issues raised and we wanted to know what those were and, and really encouraging. And, and also knowing that, you know, the survey was done in a very methodological way so that there was validity to extrapolating this data to a larger population. And, but again, Mayor and Chief knew that there would be limitations to that. So they wanted additional voices to be heard if folks had things to, that they wanted to add as well. So it is encouraging that, that we are pinpointing more accurately what the issues are so that we can actively move on those issues now. And so that we can also, so that we can also work to build on what has positively been done. And then we can find out next step. I, I really encourage to find out what officers are saying that they, so directly from them and not assuming that we know.
I think that last point is a really good point, absolutely.
Me too.
So I found it interesting, Mary, one of the points that you made, there were some people who made a comment. It wasn't about law enforcement, but about a citizen group, Back the Blue, that there's concern from some people about this. And the recommendation, just to reiterate, you, you talked about, is there a way that we can potentially involve and engage law enforcement and talk about appropriate ways for showing support?
Sure, so there was some concern and, and there were quite lengthy comments left about this from multiple folks. But there was concern that that group, the, that the Back the Blue group was not achieving the goal of supporting law enforcement, but was actually working in negative ways against our communities of color. And so with that, with that knowledge, I think that most officers would agree that they don't want to go into the line of duty to harm people or to create a divisive, you know, chasm in, in society. That they don't want to encourage this divisiveness, but that they do want to feel supported. So again, to reiterate that that was one of the ways in which I said, well, we need to understand what officers are saying. And we also need to acknowledge, as Bruce had said, that we need to acknowledge that these are real lived experiences that are causing folks who live and reside in our community to, to feel unsafe and to feel that they are not welcome in their own home in many cases. So in what ways can we as, as social service providers, support them and, and make this a better lived experience for them? And not further oppression, not create larger inequalities. And again, I think that this is something that most officers would be on board. And so I think that it's not an either or that we can denounce groups that are contributing to racism while also working to support officers. So I think that there's multiple ways that we can do this.
Yeah, and it is an interesting scenario because the group is called Back the Blue and there is no real affiliation with any law enforcement agency in Cortland County or the municipality that oversee, the government entity that oversees that law enforcement agency. Best of my knowledge, there's no contact or involvement from our chief, the village chief, university police chief, the county sheriff. And I would hazard a guess that in terms of the elected officials, I do not have any direct engagement nor would I believe the village mayor nor the chair of the legislature or SUNY Cortland or the state. So it sounds like there, there's a need for us to have some communication and potentially work on a, a relationship here that is a little closer in terms of supporting what law enforcement says is appropriate ways to support law enforcement. I'm not looking for a response there, it's just a thought that has occurred to me. I, I would liken it to a booster club that's not affiliated with the high school. They're, they're supportive, but if you're not involved or engaged with the actual entity, then. Yeah, I just found it interesting that that came up and there weren't any questions towards that.
All right, Counsel, any further questions? Chief Catalano was on as well as is the deputy chief. Mike, Paul, is there anything that you would like to contribute or?
No, I would, I really want to thank Dr. Canito Cobell for all the work that she did putting into this. It was lengthy. It, it built upon a survey we did many, many years ago. So I was happy that we were able to complete it. I, I'll say that I wasn't entirely surprised by the results. But there is something to be learned from it. And, and there's some areas that we have to pay attention to. And I think I mentioned it to Mary that we need to do a better job of educating our communities to all the things that we do do at the police department. Because there are some misconceptions about what we do and how we do it. And I think we have to be more clear on those issues. But I, I really thank, thank her for the work because other than postage, it didn't cost us anything.
Yes, thank you very much. It's really appreciated.
No, it, it is my pleasure and I have extended the offer to continue to aid in ways that you all feel might be useful. And so this is, you know, it, the, the work is extremely important to me and it, it is not just about, you know, checking boxes. So it's about boots on the ground and how we can get this done. So I, you know, in any ways I can be supportive, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as the chief mentioned, it does give us a direction in some areas where we need to focus our energies to improve.
Go ahead. Mary, I'm assuming that you have some company for the popcorn and it's probably a little ones. Thank you so much for taking the time out of your evening.
They are long in bed and, and happy that this portion of the work is done, so.
Very good. Well, I hope you're able to enjoy a quiet evening for the rest of you. Thank you so much for the tremendous effort. Counsel, anything further to discuss on this? Are we ready to move on? We're ready to move on. Asked to add the potential resolution by counsel to lift the hiring freeze for the potential to hire a firefighter. Can we entertain a motion to consider John Bennett, second, Katie Solomon discussion? This is pretty straightforward. We have a, and we see Chief Friedman, but we have a potential retirement coming up. Any questions, Chief? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? And one, two, three, four. Excuse me a second. Did I lose Jackie? Is she still on? I do not see her, so that would make it official. She may have had a connection issue, but for the record, that makes it six oh. And I'm sure she will rejoin us. Agenda, next agenda item, promoting resolution to allow the promotion for a firefighter. Agenda, next agenda item, promoting uh resolution to allow the promotion for a firefighter to the title of captain in the fire department. Motion to consider John Bennett, second Katie Silman discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. And the next agenda item, hiring a firefighter uh effective March eleventh. Motion to consider John Bennett, second Katie Silman discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, actually agenda, what was on the agenda as three and four, we've had some discussion. Uh there's some desire to remove from tonight's agenda. So we put agenda item number three on the floor for consideration. And if nobody, if nobody moves it forward, then it dies. So it's on the floor. Now, and then number four, resolution authorized entry to one late, one year option release. Motion to consider. None. Uh that comes off agenda and I believe that is the correct step at this time. It'll allow us more time to have some discussions and answer some of the questions that came forward after this was proposed. And that would bring us to agenda item number seven. Resolution authorizing the fire department to apply for a FEMA safer grant for the funding of four additional firefighters slash code enforcement personnel to augment staffing. This grant is a zero percent city match for three years with no commitment to maintain said staffing after period of performance. Total grant application is one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Motion to consider Troy and second by Cap McCarthy. Discussion.
I think this, sorry. Go ahead.
Chief.
Yes.
John. Um as in our discussion last week when we did speak, we just want to clarify that all the added benefits from health insurance, vacation, um sick days and pension costs will be covered by this grant.
Yeah, that that's correct. And that's why the uh grant is coming forward tonight. Um in the past, that has always been a concern and rightfully a good concern that this this grant specifically requires uh a match of the city. And at the end of the program period, the entire cost for a position or more than one position is borne back to the city. So that's why even Chief Glover would hesitate to even bring this to you because he recognized the the end of it, what it meant to the city. So when this was presented uh to me, um it seemed like a different twist to it. And with that, um upon research and realizing that these additional benefits are all covered, the salaries are covered, and there's no match to the city for three years and there's no requirement at the end of the performance period to maintain these firefighters. Um I think it provides a great opportunity for us to get over um a hump here in our organization and really evaluate not only the fire department but the code office and and try to fix some of the issues that we have. So I hope that answers your question.
Now, the the first one, and just to clarify, the next couple of questions is, again, too, the union has agreed not to want to seek, make the added positions down the road permanent to raise the staffing number. Um plus also, what we've discussed is looking ahead down the road in three years, you would have numerous retirements to where then these three or four will be slotted into those numbers, correct?
That that's correct. So the your your question's a two-part question. One, I spoke with the union uh regarding this and what's, we all know it's in the contract regarding the minimum staffing in the minimum manning in the contract. Um I spoke with them as well as corporation counsel to discuss the possibility of an MOU reiterating the fact that this will not change the contract uh numbers that are there. And uh that has been entertained and that will be, and again, we need to remember, this is an application. So we're not awarded yet, but before that happens, that would be one of the stipulations that I would want to see to make sure we're protecting ourselves. Um and the second part of it, what was your second part of your question? You split it. Sorry, I ran out of popcorn, so I'm I'm.
Well, in a three-year period, we would be, after the next three years, you were estimating that there would be three to four.
Yes. So a couple of things that that are, that, yeah, at the end of three years, um I anticipate we would have retirements that we could absorb these positions into that uh with a retirement. And unfortunately, if that wasn't able to happen, um the potential for layoffs are there, but there's also the potential to reapply for the grant. Um and and we really don't know what's going to happen at that point, um but that is uh always the potential, so.
Yeah. Um now, and I don't know how many others you spoke to on council, but to clarify that, again, too, there's an excellent chance that you would not hear back if this is um given by the feds for us until probably the end of this calendar year, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I I don't anticipate uh knowing until uh the end of September, October and without a start date of this. But one other point that was made is regarding the training. If this does come to fruition, we are able to send these folks out for training. Um and it doesn't affect the current staffing we have. When we send people out for training, which like the police department, we we send them out and it poses a difficulty to our staffing models. Um if we're able to do this and we, at the end of three years, we can slide them into positions, they're already trained, they're ready to go, and they haven't, you know, it's it's a it's a benefit fiscally at that point, too, so. So yes, if we're going to start this, I assume it'll be around the first of January. And again, that's if we're awarded. I assume a lot of departments are going to look at this now because of just what we're looking at, too.
Yes. That was good for me, chief. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Well, this this opportunity couldn't have come at a better time, actually. Uh I'm glad that we're able to uh pursue this. Nail it out.
I need some stamps. DC stamps.
Oh, wait a minute, it's already in the mail. Bruce hasn't had a raise.
I have a question unless Katie wants to to go there. Do you have something, Katie? You were ahead of me.
Okay.
In the mind, no. Um first of all, chief, thank you for your supporting documentation. You 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 just do a fantastic job on these things and and I appreciate it. And it it saves a lot of questions, I think, going down the road. As I'm looking down the road, are you going to have uh, so I have like a probably like a eight-part question if you want to take some notes, so you can.
All right, I'll try.
Are you going to have, will there be another civil service exam to pull from potential candidates before this hiring process comes? And I know I'm putting the cart way before the horse. I'm just saying, what if, will you have another, will there be another testing um cycle?
We just, we just completed a testing cycle um recently. And we've got a new list that we haven't hired off of yet. As of since right now.
So you won't have another list coming? I mean, there's not another test coming up this fall or anything, then?
No.
Okay, all right. So I guess the rest of my questions really are are moot then because you and I had talked and I know you had in the past, you know, looking to ways to diversify the fire department. And this would sort of give us some time to think of some strategies and how we're going to do that. Um but we're still going to be tied to that civil service list. And I thought maybe if there was another testing coming up, we could look at how we could get more people, more individuals involved in taking that test, but that's not going to be a reality. So I guess we'll just have to, you know, figure some things out, but this gives us some time to look into that. And I knew that you were um um opponent of of trying to diversify the the uh fire department as much as possible um with qualified individuals, so.
And I think we did in this recent examination, uh we're, we've, we've, again, we haven't hired off it yet. When we start hiring off it, I can request another examination uh within a year's timeframe, um which I probably will do. Um and at that point, I'm hoping that we can even reach out and get a a bigger group to take the examinations like we've talked about. So that's my goal, but we'll see how that works.
Okay, all right. Well, we have some time to to plan it out, so, but thanks. I I I'm fully supportive of this. This is, to me, is a no-brainer and and, you know, this is a fantastic opportunity.
Further discussion?
I just want to thank the chief and the department for constantly looking for grant opportunities to kind of offset some of these costs. We really appreciate, you know, you keeping your eyes out for this.
Yep.
Absolutely.
No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And Jackie, I I saw that you were out, but you are back and that was an affirmative, correct?
An affirmative, yeah.
Very good. So that's six oh on that one. Um and I will encourage counsel, I'll say it now, and if we do receive a grant, uh I'm going to encourage counsel to memorialize expectations in terms of what will happen at the end of the three years because uh chief has very clearly laid out some options. But three years can be quick, but it can also be a very long period of time. And according to the paperwork here in three years, let's say the grant runs out. If the city does absorb the cost of the additional staffing, it will be close to, and my guess is it will be over half a million dollars, which will be potentially a large burden to undertake. So my expectation will be, if we do get the award, to have a discussion about what may happen, what the options are, as they were laid out in this meeting this evening. Uh so that future, three years from now, four years from now, there can, people won't ask, hey, what were you thinking? All right, we know what we were thinking.
Thank you.
Ryan, real quick, I did talk to the chief today that I had mentioned to him that this grant did come forward that we're going to have to sit down with some, obviously you and some other people from the council, whoever wants to get so-called starter committee, that there's going to be some stuff that's going to have to be discussed for sure, so.
Well, you know, there's been discussion in terms of uh staffing and code. This is probably part of the solution, but what's the long-term vision in terms of both departments and what's happening? So what what is the benefit and what's the long-term vision for the city? So Troy, I think that's a good question to ask and at some point to have that discussion sooner probably as opposed to later.
Sure. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Agenda item, and this will be number eight, resolution to allow the mayor to sign a letter of intent to develop a fast charging station.
I do not believe we voted on the resolution.
We did. I thought we did. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I must, I support it.
Very good. Four, six, so that is seven oh with Jackie back, we're good. Thank you for the uh minor, John, my mistake. Uh we'll be back voting again in two weeks. Number eight, resolution allow the mayor to sign a letter of intent to develop fast charging station for electrical vehicles in the downtown core. Can we entertain a motion to consider? Cap McCarthy, second, John Bennett, discussion.
Mayor, didn't, didn't we skip seven?
That that was the last one, was the fire department? I changed the numbering because we added others.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Not clear, but we just did the fire department, so we're on what is number six on the, if you're keeping score at home. But it bounced up because we eliminated two and we added four. So the letter of intent for a fast charging station for electrical vehicles, and I'm sorry, I did have a motion, correct? And then did that have support?
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah.
So quick reminder, last year we were approached by New York, NYPD, New York Power Authority, and they were looking to do fast charging electrical vehicle stations throughout the state. And we've had some discussion with Public Works, making sure that it's not just the right parking lot because of location, but also it has the right power source, et cetera. And now, but we've done some good background on this. Unfortunately, I think it was three weeks ago, we got an email from NYPD basically saying that they do not want to consider us in this round, that we're going to be on hold. So little bit of disappointment. And then fortuitously, within the next week, received an email from this representative of this company, Charge Point. They are putting in an application with NYSERTA and uh their application is basically looking for some funding to help them establish uh fast charging electrical vehicle stations. And we do have a couple of potential locations that have been identified due to our previous work. And initially, they wanted a little bit more of a commitment and we settled on a letter of intent which would give the city the opportunity to withdraw for whatever reason, we decide this is not the right path for us. So that's where we are. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Number nine, discussion and potential resolutions supporting the town of Cortlandville's objection to an expansion of mining in the town's portion of the city aquifer. We can start with discussion and then talk about a resolution. There's been some discussion between myself and supervisor Tom Williams from the town of Cortlandville. Uh they have an application for a mining operation that falls within the aquifer to go deeper and farther than uh what was previously permitted, and the depth is a potential concern. Uh they are filing, there's two different letters from the town that have gone to the state, DEC, and I believe another rep. And they are interested in seeing if the city would also support uh their efforts. And I believe at this point, they want a longer window um in terms of the secret process to make sure that we're going to keep our water system safe, our water source safe. Wars of move.
That sounds entirely reasonable to me.
So the first letter that he shared with myself was to New York State, DEC Region Seven, Cortland Suboffice, asking that the thirty-day public notice be extended another sixty days. And then there is a more extensive letter that I've shared with counsel. It's twenty-two pages. I am not going to read it to you this evening. But we can have further discussion if you so desire. So it sounds like uh counsel would like to work with the town of Cortlandville. So a potential resolution, be it resolved that the mayor uh works collaboratively with the town of Cortlandville regarding a request for an extension on the public notice period regarding the thirty rocks, Cortlandville sand and gravel permit modification.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, Mary, you you sent us some information on that, some letters, I think, that they had written and I had a chance to read through some of those. I mean, to me, I don't know why we would even want to take a chance with our freshwater source. And it's it's one of the things, I mean, if you if you take play this out, that's one of the things the Northeast has going for it. You know, you can't drink the water in a lot of places in the West and the Southwest. I mean, my brother lives in LA, he wouldn't drink the water there. You know, so this freshwater source we have here is going to be a really valuable resource going forward. And um for us to want to tinker with a sole source aquifer, I I don't think we can use language that's strong enough to say, wait a minute, let's pull back and, you know, I understand development, but for crying out loud, this is our drinking water. And uh I I if 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 you if you've had a chance to travel to places where you can't drink the water out of the faucet and you come back home, you don't take it for granted anymore. You go, wow, this is, this is really something. I appreciate being able to do that, so. You know, I don't I don't think, when you say, you know, support Cortlandville, I want to go stronger than that. I want, you know, I'll support them in the strongest possible way because that's how strong I feel about this freshwater source we have here in Cortland. It's relatively affordable. And if we lose that, oh my goodness, uh I don't want to think about it.
Right. With with this resolution, it'll show our support. We want to extend the timeframe and we will work with the town to coordinate our responses to be as effective as we can. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, seven oh.
Did you have a motion and a second on that?
I'll I'll second it if you didn't.
I'll move.
I'll first.
Okay. That's right, it was a discussion. I said we're discussing then move towards a resolution if so desired. So the resolution um being moved forward by Katie Silman and then supported by Bruce Typh.
Good catch, Devin.
I'm off my game. Very good. Yes, thank you, Devin. Item number ten. Discussion on concerns raised by neighbors on the proposed solar development in the town of Cortlandville off of Blue Creek Road. And I'll get this started. I know we have some people who have been waiting very patiently. So we were approached by a couple of residents who are on Ridgeview, which is adjacent, it's a street adjacent to what is currently a farm field, where this particular development is proposed. Uh, this stretch of road, Ridgeview, is actually parts in the city and part in town of Cortlandville. Um, I actually reside on Ridgeview, so I asked Cat McCarthy, uh, because I figured she will be able to not just be impartial, but also maintain the correct air or perception of impartiality. I didn't want anybody saying, well, you just live there and that's why you're raising concerns. So Cat McCarthy has had some communication with some people, and I will now pass to Cat, if there's anything you would like to share, or if you would like to recognize some of our guests this evening?
Sure, I can just open it up by acknowledging that I have heard from a number of residents who have concerns about the proposed project, in particular with the water runoff um, from that site. You know, there has been flooding issues in the past, kind of as a result of some of those, also with concerns about maintenance and ongoing environmental issues potentially with possible damage to, to equipment um, as well. And so just general concerns from neighbors as well as property, property values and aesthetics. Um, so from that, I think we've got some folks here who also wanted to, to share some of their, their concerns.
Yes, thank you, if I may. Cat, we appreciate your concern. I've talked with a lot of people on Ridgeview and surrounding and adjoining streets. This industrial solar project is going to really impact our community. To compare what we might end up with in our neighborhood, we looked at a solar project near East River Road. And I sent some pictures to Mayor Tobin, I believe, and we can't imagine there would be any reason that our municipality, the city of Portland or Cortlandville, would want to put this type of project in a residential neighborhood. From the engineering report that the Cortlandville Planning Department got, uh, the panels can reach up to fifteen feet high. A good percentage of us that live on Ridgeview are the original owners, paying taxes to the city of Portland and to the city school district for over thirty years. We've raised our kids in Portland, own businesses, worked in Portland, were teachers, school administrators, contractors, police officers, politicians, owners, managers, or work with private nonprofit businesses, supporting our family and other families in the community. We contribute to the well-being of the community of Portland and help various nonprofits. The reason I wanted to put that in front of you is because our connection with this community and the concerns about this project provide a valid reason for the city of Portland to disagree with this industrial solar project. It will have a profound change in the character of our neighborhood. To make this clear, a change in the character of the neighborhood is sufficient reason to decline the project. There is continued concern about flooding the travels from the proposed site through the St. Mary Cemetery and into the city water, or city of Portland. Clearing and grading of this site will destroy habitat, it'll pose a risk of soil erosion, soil compaction, and other, and possibly alter the drainage channels, which might directly hit one of our residences. Use of the herbicides and pesticides in the maintenance of the site, if it was constructed, will leach downhill into our neighborhood. Potential hazardous material from the panels and the electrical equipment could present a pollution problem to our neighborhood and the groundwater. The wildlife that uses this location will be displaced by the construction of the site. And the effects will be, would be disturbed by the effects of the solar panels, if in fact it was to go through. The visual effect of twenty-nine thousand solar panels will change the quality of life in the community and make this area less desirable, reducing the value of our property that we've worked so hard for. The assessed value will be reduced and in turn would reduce the taxes to the city of Portland. I'm sure, after, I hope Mayor Tobin had a chance to look at those panels, but anyone traveling down Cosmo Hill to Blue Creek Road will see twenty-nine thousand solar panels covering at least thirty-eight acres. Our neighbors live on Ridgeview, will have this in their backyard, or in my case, my front yard. And it's going to destroy the quality of life there. The proposed site is currently zoned for farm use and considered prime farmland. Prime farmland is an asset our community should take careful consideration before allowing an industrial project to remove it from its current use. Why should we even consider zoning, changing the zoning? Are there more appropriate sites that can be used for solar projects? And we're not against solar necessarily, most of us aren't against solar, but there are other concerns of its actual efficiency, if you take a look at it from the beginning of it to the construction of it. And then the disposal of the solar panels or panels, there's a lot of caustic materials that go into that. So I'm just hoping that the Portland City Common Council and all our other municipal representatives would support the current residents who are long-term taxpayers and see that this industrial solar project would be a detriment to the character of our community. So we are asking, and, and part of the secret review or secret rules is that the community that's like Cortlandville would be required to advise the city of Portland, this is going on, and that gives you an opportunity to respond to the project. So we're asking that you support uh, our, the citizens that are involved, and I think if it were ever to be developed, the rest of the community would be up in arms, if they have to look at that, it's going to be just one awful site. And if you haven't seen such a site, go up the East River Road to Riley Road and take a look at that, because it's it, it's not going to look good in our backyard, and I don't think the city or the residents of Cortlandville are going to uh, be pleased with it. So we would ask that you let Cortlandville know, or that you support the, or against this project. And you can take a look at my reasons that I've stated and look for other input from other concerned citizens, but um, it's a real concern, and I think it would decimate the, the character of our immediate community, but our neighborhood, but also the community. That's a terrible place to have a solar farm. Thank you.
Uh, David, very quickly, you mentioned, you said us, and if I recollect correctly, there, you've had a meeting, there's some other people. Can, can you just give us an idea in terms of when you say us, who you're referring to?
Yes, uh, we've got neighbors in immediately on Ridgeview Avenue. I think that we've tried to involve the entire street, but we've had active Zoom meetings with Scott Steed, Jim Nichols, who was on the Zoom meeting, or was on the Zoom meeting earlier, and if he wishes to say something, I'd love to hear from him. Uh, Sherry Lunas, uh, Patrick Perfetti, who's recently moved up there. I've talked with Karen Pace, Karen and Nick Pace, I've talked with Gary and Kathy Fox, who are in Florida, and they're changing their view, and they're starting to not like this. They had different views in the beginning, but they're, they're changing their view. I've talked to people up on Cosmo's Hill who are against it. A good friend of mine, Chuck Spalding, who's not in town right now. And I've talked to, had correspondence with Harry Higgins. Um, we are in the process of hiring an attorney uh, to represent us at the Cortlandville meeting. Uh, he's a prominent land use attorney. And, um, we, we just, we think it'd be a real nightmare to have that there.
Thank you, David. Uh, Troy, did you have a hand up?
Yeah, um, reference to Mr. Jones's comment, I do believe that is zoned agricultural, and I have, I've had personally, uh, six phone calls. Unfortunately, they're not city residents, but Cortlandville residents, and really, really commented on their concerns about this project. And I said I certainly would make sure that I don't support it at all, so.
Appreciate that. And I hope the rest of the council members will feel the same. It's just, it's not the right place. End of story.
So the ask at this point is for council to support, uh, some of the neighbors that are concerned about the project and follow up with the town of Cortlandville.
Yeah, Mayor, could I comment on that? Because, yeah, Mr. Jones, I want to thank you for coming and talking, speaking so eloquently on uh, the importance of preserving our neighborhoods. Because that's one of the reasons I got back involved into local government again, is being concerned of what's going on with some of the neighborhoods and the, the, seeing the destruction of the integrity of some of our neighborhoods or decline, maybe not destruction, but certainly decline. And what you're speaking of is, I asked the council as a whole to, to think about this is, this is what happened, you know, we live here because we love this community, it's a good quality of life, we love our neighborhoods, and, and there are things that are impacting these neighborhoods that we cannot just stand by and let them happen. Um, this, this is a, a, in my perspective, one example of that. There are others too, and I hope that we will take the big view on, hey, let's, let's start doing a better job of doing what we can to preserve our neighborhoods. There's some other things that we also need to take a look at, and um, Mr. Jones, you had me as soon as you talked about changing the character of the neighborhood. I said, okay, that's, that's enough for me. This really needs to be taken a, another look at, and, and probably it's not a good idea to move forward with it because.
Thank you. And Portland's a good place to bring up a family, and it's a
Yeah, we, we've enjoyed, we brought our kids up here in this neighborhood, and I'm seeing some things changing here that I'm not liking either. So I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jones was an insurance agent for a number of years until, uh, the agency moved on. But Dave, I certainly feel for you and the residents up there that these farms unfortunately are popping up all over the place in New York State. And, uh, and residents are having very little input as to, uh, what they can do about it. Uh, so we, uh, we support, certainly support your efforts in trying to get this change corrected.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Yeah, welcome.
Mr. Jones, how far along in the process with the town? Are they?
Well, it was proposed sometime last fall. And I don't know if I can answer your question exactly, but they, they were talking about putting a moratorium on solar farms or full solar projects. I don't want to call them farms, because there's nothing to do with farming, they're industrial projects. Um, they're having a meeting, uh, on the twenty-third, I think, it's a week from today. And, uh, to discuss it further. So there hasn't been a, a motion to accept. Uh, there's been a lot of information that they've collected, they, uh, the planning board has had a opinion from a engineer. Um, Summit Solar is the name of the contractor that wants to install these. And they just have a lot of money and a lot of desire, that there's going to be a lot of not kickbacks, but they're, they're supported by the New York State to, to build solar farms, so they get rebates. Uh, that's, that's So I think, uh, they, they stand to make a lot of money by doing this. And, uh, they probably carry a lot of influence, a lot more than I do, but.
Do you, on any chance, do you know, has any, because they've had flooding issues, you know, at the cemetery, have any representatives of St. Mary's Cemetery brought up any concerns with the town of Cortlandville about this?
Um, I don't think this, the diocese has not accepted because they destroyed a good portion of the cemetery. The diocese has not accepted the work that's been done up there. The current owner of the property, Larry Hill, has done a lot of work up there and has been a real
I'm going to ask, let, let's stick to the topic again.
Yeah, so, yes, the diocese, Saint Anthony, they have not accepted the, uh, they have not accepted the work that's been up there, and they're, they're part of the approval process apparently.
Thank you.
For flooding. But in addition to that, the, the, the work that's going to be done, and where the solar panels are tilted or placed, can change that channel where the waters, they might be redirected in a different direction. We don't know that, but, uh,
Well, I would have to think that the planning board would have to be looking at all that. But that, that was one of the reasons why I asked, because of all the runoff difficulties that the cemetery has had um, with that other situation. But thank you.
I'm just going to throw out that, um, just in the past year in Cortlandville, going out thirteen on Lime Hollow, that has just appeared in the last year, and now there's a second one going up right next to it. Uh, to the solar panel properties. And then there is another one that I just saw recently off behind the Burn Dairy and that area. Um, there's a West Western in that area, several, near Lime Hollow, but on the other side. Um, it just seems like they're going to town with, you know, looking for properties, looking for their properties to, to place them. Because I know those three in the last year, because I'm always at the, in the Lime Hollow area hiking, I have them. And they just appeared. Boom.
And they're getting approved, and I'm hoping municipalities start putting a plan together saying, wait a minute, we've got to slow this down and have some regulation.
So in terms of the city, we actually did eliminate ground-mounted solar, with the exception being that if somebody appeals, it would go to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, but we, we determined the city not to be an appropriate location, and full disclosure, a couple of those agenda items were about earlier that were taken off, where it was about solar, is about solar potentially on the Rosen site, which is a property that is very limited in terms of what can be constructed or utilized for. And another project over right by the exit on the hill. Or by the Route eighty-one exit. And, um, that's going through the process in terms of city approval, but special extenuating circumstances where it's property that can only really utilize for a very small number of options. Counsel, any further discussion at this point?
I just want to thank Mr. Jones for coming and, you know, sharing, sharing additional information about this.
Thank you, Cat. I appreciate it.
And with support from council, I believe Cat McCarthy and I will stay in communication and uh, discuss next steps and how to best convey the concerns of our constituents to the town.
Thank you. Appreciate everything you folks do.
Thank you, and thank you for being here this evening. Agenda item number eleven. Uh, so we had a, my gosh, way, way back when I was first on council, we had an audit by the comptroller. Tom Michaels probably remembers it even better than I, and, uh, results came through, and we have been in the midst of a second audit from the comptroller, and it's going to be coming in, in two phases. First phase, we've gotten a preliminary draft in terms of report, and there is a response that's required by the mayor from the city. Back to the comptroller's office, I have shared with council, and in the interest of time, because we are running late this evening, what I'll ask is, counsel, if you do have any concerns, if there's anything you'd like to discuss about, you communicate directly with me. And that can be, hey, it could be later this evening, tomorrow, but the response is due Friday. Um, I've shared some information, and if there's any questions, please let me know, but the response needs to be done in the next basically two days. And I want to make sure that you understand what's going in. It does not require council approval. But in the interest of transparency, and we work very well together, I want to make sure that I keep you up to date with what's transpiring. So if there's any questions that you'd like to ask now, the floor is open. Otherwise, we'll continue. we'll continue on because we do have a couple of items we need to discuss in the executive session when we wrap up here. Very good. COVID-19 update, we heard in the front end of the meeting, legitimate concerns about inappropriate behavior by residents. And in this issue, there was a house where there was a large gathering. People who are not compliant in terms of working with law enforcement, which I find very troubling. And going forward, we're continuing to have discussions about not just this specific property, which this issue is not concluded. It received our attention and will continue to receive our attention because there are some other issues that have arisen. And going forward, law enforcement is very capable of making sure that future events will not take place. And if they do, that there will be consequences for people that choose to engage in behavior that's simply not acceptable. Katie Solomon.
That's good to hear. I would like to know why it won't happen again. What's going to be different? And the sternly, the sternly noted letters from the college are not having the effect that they're intended to have. And I'm concerned that our student rental population is unregulated by the college. We house the majority of the students in the neighborhoods in the city. Nobody from the college keeps track of what they're doing. They're beholden to no one. It's, it's, speaking of neighborhoods, the onus to make sure kids aren't partying should not be on the neighbors. Making a neighbor rat out a neighbor destroys a neighborhood. So I was pleased to hear from Chief Catalano that there's a task force, which I hadn't owned. And that they go out proactively, preemptively to look for trouble spots. And that it's comprised of city police as well as I understand some Cortland, University of Cortland police. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. So I'm glad that there's a joint effort and I think it's high time that the university put their police on our streets, in our neighborhoods. And they need to help pay for this too. That's a lot of city resources that city taxpayers are paying for. And for too long, the conversation has been what the college does for the community. And the community does plenty for the college. I'm a teacher. We train their teachers. It's, it's not a, it's, it's a wonderful thing to have a student teacher in your classroom, but that is a service that teachers do for new teachers, training teachers. It's not the other way around. It's great that we have kids who coach our students, but that also does something for them and it does something for the college because they want those kids to have service hours. It has to be a symbiotic relationship between town and gal. And right now, the town is not feeling the respect of the gal. And that has to be addressed with college students at the college level. And it's pretty outrageous.
I can address some of this and I'll refer back, there was an issue in the phone. And actually, I think it might've been in your ward where there was a property and there was a gathering, gathering was broken up. There was a police report from that. And in the report, it talked about potentially 200 people, but I'd like to clarify this evening that it was a couple of events that were broken up. There's not that many in the one location. There was also information that there was underage high school people that were in attendance. And upon further review, it was not local high school kids. They were siblings or sibling and friends of one of the residents from out of town. But it caused a lot of great consternation and deservedly so, because we should be concerned about this. SUNY UPD was engaged. They were there at that event and they did assist. They helped to identify a lot of the participants. So when Fred Pierce earlier was talking about how many people have been suspended, eliminated in terms of having their opportunity to continue their education in the near term. SUNY UPD was engaged and I believe that they were engaged this past weekend as well. And they are cooperating and working well with our law enforcement. So rest assured that this is not just the city that's working on this. UPD is limited in terms of their jurisdiction, but they are willing and very strong collaborative partners. In addition, Tom Michaels, Bruce Titler and myself have been meeting, must have been twice now since the start of this semester with a couple of the administration members, including Eric Bitterbaum, and having discussions about what's happening. And as there's hot points and as things happen, we are keeping the lines of communication open. The communication, the, oh, Bruce?
Yeah, I, yes, a couple of things have come to mind. First, up until Friday, things were doing well with the, the students. And that's why I think everybody is so disappointed in what happened Friday and just thoroughly disgusted that some folks would go the route they went. But they're young people too, and they're hardwired, not, they're not, they're not hardwired to be isolated. They're hardwired to be social. So I'm not making excuses for them because they're also mature enough to realize, okay, we can't do this right now. And it seems like most of them are not doing that. But I want to, I want to reinforce what Katie said. I never had a satisfactory answer. I see the, the university police patrolling the neighborhoods all the time, the continuous streets and going up 281, et cetera. And to my knowledge, they only have half as many students on campus as they did before. So unless they laid off much of their their, their security force, which I didn't hear that they had, they must have more people there than they actually would need to patrol that college where they only have half as many students. So I, I've never had a satisfactory answer as to why they can't help us out more in the neighborhoods either. I think that's something that that should be addressed. And so I support Katie on that. And I don't know why not. They have half as many kids as they had before. They, they, they obviously must have some time. I see them driving around the neighborhoods. They could stop at some of those, those houses just as easily. And apparently they do now with our CPD as a task force. You know, I think we need to, I, I just want to know why they, why we can't have more of that. I'm just asking a question. I've never had a real satisfactory answer to that.
In addition, if I could just add, if there's something that we, as the council could do or incentives we could pass, if our police have their hands tied and there's something we could do locally so that their time isn't wasted waiting for kids to open their doors. I'd like to know what it is because I will do what I can to give you what you need.
Brian?
Let me go to Troy and then Deputy Chief had his hand raised.
I totally agree with Bruce, but it's something we ought to be asking the Deputy Chief Sandy. I don't think Catalano's on with us anymore, but do they have the jurisdictions to go to these houses without the city asking for them? So that's what we got to clarify. So that's what, you know, they're like Bruce said, I agree with you. There's only 50% kids on campus. What are they doing? But I think I'll let Paul speak. Obviously he's shaking his head. I know what the answer is.
I can assure you that the university police and the city police have a very good cooperative relationship. And we are aware of the problem. The, the city police is taking it very seriously and we are being very proactive with the assistance of UPD. UPD is limited in their geographic jurisdiction. They are coming to the student housings at our request, which is kind of a mutual aid that expands them a little bit. So that's why they are not patrolling the college housing alone. We call them for assistance. And let's not forget, the, the college has been great in dealing with this incident. They, they have the hammer. These kids are not afraid of a noise violation ticket or, or anything that we can do to them. They know the courts aren't going to do anything to them. SUNY can do something to them and SUNY has guaranteed they will do something. And as Fred Pierce said, they threw, they suspended over 120 last semester. So I mean, that's the hammer that we need in the cooperation from SUNY and I think we are getting it. Since last Friday's incident, I've been in communication with top administration from SUNY and they are all taking it very serious. And this has been ongoing for a few weeks. This is not an isolated incident, which prompted us to step up our game and become more proactive instead of reactive. And I can assure you and the rest of the community, we will continue to be proactive. And we've already taken steps to work with code for additional avenues of going after these houses. I have written to the Cortland County Chair, Paul Hyder, and the Department of Health to see if they can help us with the AG's office about the governor's EOs on COVID restrictions of people, you know, groups over 50, which would be another hammer. So we are looking at multiple ways of attacking the situation to amp it up. But regardless of what we do, I, I can assure you, SUNY is the one that is going to step forward and, and going to help us resolve some of this. But they're kids and they feel invincible. And, you know, I, I'm certain they don't act like this at home. And, you know, I'm sure their parents are not going to be too happy when they start losing tuition.
They don't identify with Cortland as home.
No.
They don't identify with Cortland as home. I wish that they did because they would take better care of it and of us. Perception is everything. And you guys are doing things. I didn't know about the task force until I talked to Chief Catalano today. I'm going to spread the news about that task force. People aren't feeling it. You know, they're not, people aren't feeling good things may be happening with SUNY admin. We're not feeling it in the neighborhoods. I'm just, that's how it is. And if we, as a council, if you need hammers, I want my own hammer. If you need hammers, I want to give you those hammers.
Okay. We'll be talking with, I've also had talks with Rick Van Donzel about what can we do on a local level? Or maybe some new local laws that will give us a little more clout with these individuals.
I say, Paul, everything you just said about cooperating and in a partnership with the college, I have been telling my, you know, using, basically saying the same thing on my constituents. But after Friday, I had somebody ask me, okay, you know, that's not working. What's going to, what's going to prevent them from doing the same thing this weekend? I said, I, I don't know. And so I think more than anything else, you're hearing the frustrations. Katie has spoken to it very well. Folks are frustrated. It's like, hey, you know, the numbers are finally starting to come down a little bit and then you come and do this and then you guys all scatter to the winds. Have they learned nothing in the last several months? And it's, it's very frustrating for those of us that are, you know, seeing this happen and then hearing the same thing. Well, we're going to do this. We're going to do this. We're going to do this. Well, it's time to do this. And, you know, whatever you need from us, I echo what Katie said, let us know because folks are really, they're, they fed up with it and it's just no good.
They feel threatened.
It's not healthy for the community.
Yeah, it's health and safety. It's, they feel, they feel threatened, like it's still, there's still a lot of COVID out there. We don't have enough people who, you know, you know, you know. This is, I would say it's a little more than frustrated. I would say they feel like there's a physical threat and that these kids aren't taking it seriously. We understand that they're kids. A lot of mixed messages because our SUNY Cortland's numbers are higher than any other Sunnis. And yet they're still going to school. They're not, they haven't switched online. So maybe that gave them a false sense of security. Who knows?
Well, I think the students also need to know, the ones that are doing this, that folks are angry. They, they're sick of being disrespected. And people in this community, a lot of them have just said they've had enough. And, and I think the students need to know that, that people are truly angry. And, you know, it's, it's been a long, long time since I've heard these kind of comments from folks and that's, so that frustration is now leading to anger, I think, because they just, you know, they're not, they're not feeling respected and they're, and I, I'm sure, and like you said, Paul, when they're home, these students are doing these things. And I'm sure individually they're probably fine folks, but when they get together, they are making some really, really bad decisions that people are fed up with.
Well, please let your constituents know that we are working aggressively to address the situation. We will, we are not letting up. You know, this isn't a, a one time in and out. We will be increasing our proactivity week after week until we stamp this out. You know, we have to put an end to it and the message going out to the college students out there who may think that they're going to do it this weekend or next weekend will be there. And we will ramp up, you know, we, just as they learned how to thwart us, we learn how to overcome those actions and we are prepared to do what we need to, to identify every single person that attends one of these parties. If we have to be there 24 hours, they'll come out sooner or later.
And how many people in the police department have been vaccinated?
I've worked very progressively to get our people vaccinated. Everybody in our department that wants to be vaccinated has been and it's about 28 people. We've all, we've all just got our second shot except for two who have changed their mind late in the game and decided they wanted to get their first dose. If I seem a little groggy tonight, I got mine yesterday.
Wow.
It does make you tired.
Paul, thanks for what you're doing. And I have to tell you, nobody is pointing a finger at CPD. I mean, that's, nobody, everybody understands that you guys are, are doing what you can, but you need some help. And the college, I think, is, is part of that solution.
Yep. We are dedicating extra personnel just for this problem. We typically don't have enough people on the street on a routine shift to deal with it. So we are putting additional personnel out for it. And their job is to strictly address the situation. And last week we had not only those, those personnel, but we also had, you know, our shift and we had UPD down there. So, you know, we're taking it very serious and these college kids should too, because we will step up our game to make sure that they can lock themselves in a room, but they won't hide.
So just to be clear, my beef is not with you. The people I talk to, their beef is not with the police department. But those resources, that overtime, that money, the college does not pay into that.
No. What, what we are utilizing for this is the grant money from communities that care about alcohol enforcement because these are alcohol parties as well. There was a high level of evidence at 70 Tompkins, you know, with the alcohol throughout the, the accessible areas and a dumpster out back that was even on, I think Channel 3 news that showed, you know, alcohol littered about and cups and so forth. So these are alcohol parties and you know, they lead to other, other things in addition to the COVID, you know, they lead to other crimes being committed.
Right.
So we are very on top of it.
I think an important message that we're trying to get out as well is that we're still in winter and they've only been back for a few weeks. We have warmer days ahead, believe it or not. And I don't know that we're eradicated from COVID by that time. So the message has to be clear. This is going to be ongoing and we're going to keep an eye on this.
Thank you.
Isn't St. Patty's coming up?
No. Why would, why would Tom think of that?
Hey, just a step ahead of you, Paul.
So this was an incident that should have been avoided. They never should have gotten together. It was a large gathering. Even though the campus number is reduced, it is not indicative of the general body. And there are people in our community who regardless of age. regardless of age, there are other people in our community, people that live here year-round, that are not as concerned about this, and display it based upon their actions. But we are treating everybody consistently, we're holding everybody to the standard, and it doesn't matter if this was college-age students, or if it was people in their forties or fifties, if you have that large gathering, it's not going to be received one. This is, this is a consistent policy, and this is a expectation that is very clear. This is where we need to be. Further discussion. I asked council to entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss a contractual negotiation, and also a personnel matter, two separate issues, and there is potential for us to take action coming out of. So a motion to go into executive session by John Bennett, and then second by Jackie Chapman, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? See, see if I did this right. Open the room, and that is for, I believe I assigned council, a couple others. Why? All right, everybody can unmute, city council are gonna need you to unmute, coming back in, I see some closed microphones, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session, moved by John Bennett, second, Jackie Chapman, very good, all those in favor of adjourning from executive session, please say aye?
Aye.
Good. We're back into our regular session. I believe, yes, we are still recording, so we're good, the two resolutions for council, first resolution, resolution to lift the hiring freeze, um, for the hiring of a police officer, motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Katie Solomon, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, second res- resolution approval to hire a police officer effective immediately.
I thought that was substitute police officer.
Uh, hiring it, hiring a police officer. John Bennett, second, Katie Solomon, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, is there any further business to come before the council this evening? Hearing none, we can entertain a motion to adjourn from Cat McCarthy, with a second from Bruce Titler. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all, folks, take care, stay safe.
Opposed? Yeah, it was a longer meeting, a lot of good discussion, a lot of important discussion. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.